Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to bring the January 28th, 2025 Rader Park County School Board, Meetings Trustees to order. Mr. Markowski, all of present account for and field with three standard leading sayings.
For those who live in the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item will be the approval of the agenda. The board will approve the agenda as presented. Please have a second. Thank you, Mr. Markowski. Any questions or comments? During that, all the members stay out of those who stand. The next item will be public comments on agenda items. We have one public comment. If you would please post your name and your address. And we have permit, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zach Silverstein, 9603 Lena Bowle Road, Marysville, Indiana. My family and I moved here to Marysville in July of 2022. From South Carolina and previously Illinois, where I completed high school and my associate's degree. I've personally lived in six different states and traveled as a consultant to Asia and Europe multiple times. Some of you probably recognize my name specifically pertaining to emails into the New Washington Elementary, but today I'll be speaking regarding inclusion of a Christian daycare system within a public education system. This inclusion of this kind of organization into a, into a school, specifically a public one, is a direct conflict of interest regarding separation of church and state. This is also relevant since there's no compensation to the school and could be perceived as a potential or preferential treatment towards specific religious denomination. So now, as the rest of my statement and my formal request before the school board regarding previous emails I've sent to the superintendent's office, this issue of inclusion or exclusion into a basketball team was finalized via email Friday, and superintendent staff did not actually follow up with me regarding these issues.
We're not talking about the basketball teams. And so you can just stay on.
Okay, so moving forward, as someone from Jewish descent, I've been to Docout. Within that concentration camp, at the very end, there's a list of people in that concentration camp that have died. And in that 12 people with my last name, Silverstein, are listed within that. And as someone of Jewish descent, I raised a disagreement with what you are doing including a religious organization within the school itself.
I think it has to do with the curricular issue.
But in the same terms, a Christian organization and the aspect that you're including them and in, within a public education system and not charging them any money is, is in itself disingenuous. I thank you all for your time, and there will be further follow-up, and I will see you at following meetings. Thank you all for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have major fund monitoring report. Good segue.
Could you be, yes, president, and go to the board? You know, every quarter, especially at the end of the year, we come and have full wall of financial reports on to talk about, we have some that are on consent to talk about major fund monitoring report every month or so. The last meeting, we did go over your fiscal indicators for '23. I did allude to what our projected balances were by the end of '24, so here they are. They will be analyzed through the fiscal indication, through the district unit field board, as they do for all school districts in the state of Indiana, the criteria goals that we put out. So you will see these numbers in January of '26 again. So which you'll see these all the way through on your, on your all funds report. That's always the consent agenda. So we concluded the year, and here, this is where the differences are going to come to you that I had spoke about before regarding the tax book rental fund because there's legislation that has us operating it differently. The fund was separate at one time from the education fund, and it was up to the little school districts that by subject grade works, you change, you transfer that entire balance into the education fund. So on our Form 92 official reports that we do send out to the state will show that all in one fund, which will replicate your fund monitoring. However, when you look at, and I will show you when we get to it, the treasurer's cash balance report of all funds, you will see those separate. I'll explain to you how that is going to work. So your funds monitoring report, we got a mini balance of $14,991, okay? Last year, we had a mini cash balance of $8.3 million in education fund. You can see that I noted on this one at the bottom that I transferred $3.7 million into that fund. So if we take about $3.7 million off, you ended the year with about, you know, almost $11 million, $10 million, between $10 and $11, so you'll see that difference. Okay, so here, I will show the five funds because that is the true fund that is represented all cash in that fund. Your operations fund ended in $9 million as projected. Last year was $7.3 million. In debt service, $5.3 million. This year, $4.1. Remember, that'll fluctuate because of how we handle payoffs, how we handle, you know, collections. We are down to one debt fund. You no longer have a pension fund, which is the next, you know, that pension fund is December 31st. So that is one fund that we no longer hook that on. So congratulations to you. And rainy day at $12 million last year, we ended at $10 million. So on your next fiscal indicator, what we always should like to show on the report, let me show you the mini cash balances. We always want to maintain or improve. Now, if we ever fluctuate through that, there is rationale behind that. You're gonna just see a great big jump in your education fund only because of tax book rate, okay? I may proceed to the treasurer's cash code balance report. You will see the education fund as Fund 101. It's in left-hand columns, it's an education fund. So you can see your actual education fund cash balance of $10,236,000 plus. Right below it, you see a fund as coded as 1002. I want you to keep that separate to always know what cash is in there. That's where we receive our funds. And I crosswalk that Fund 102 into Fund 101, so it'll be combined like Form 92 and your monitor. But I always keep that out. Now, on the previous, on the fund monitoring report, I've been smoking that I traced with $3.7 million. It's just showing you how much the previous year, you had $3.7 million in tax book rental. So at the bottom, you'll see last year's cash and last year's tax book rental, which was $3 million. You ended this year with $4.7 million. That's how much went into your education fund. Does that make that confusing? I don't know. And as you peruse through the rest of the funds, you see we are maintaining positive balances, any negative balances, and for the new board members, so we understand they are funds because of a cash flowing through the district that we're told to go into the hole, okay? One being a bond reimbursement fund. So we're getting our process on the middle school, and people are working. So there are, you know, bills are being paid. I have a cash flowing through that, covering that. When the bond comes in, you'll pass, you'll be passing a resolution to allow me to get reimbursed for any of those expenses. The other funds are reimbursable funds from our payment grants. So the state of Indiana has until many years ago, if we must spend the money, we fill out a request to get the money back in. District of State great strides to be able to handle this, so that way it can be done on a monthly basis, which is more of an accounting normality. So this goes through in one month, and we get reimbursed the following month. We can handle that because we have cash now in the district. At one point, we couldn't. This team was having to get reimburse this over two weeks, and it was a very big stress, a lot of work. And you know how sometimes they, we say, oh, that boy, this check reissue, it was very confusing to hit. So that is one. Generally, we did what we need to get any corrections, we made it to the next one. So that's pretty uniform in the accounting standard. The other notable thing is to take a look at your, your self-insurance fund. This is a fund that was in dire straits about five years ago, and we have taken great strides keeping this fund at a certain level because we have unified on the fact that we prefer that when we're going to engage in raises for staff, that our insurance rates don't be down, okay? So we tried everything as a committee to work together to make sure that we're very prudent and very responsible, making our decisions on what those rates are. So this past year, we only raised 1% totality, which is probably about 17% to 18% more than any other state of Indiana. We're, we're tied on that, I guess. I keep looking at Spence, she serves on that. Tanny serves on that committee with me, so we pretty much pay attention to, you know, how that money is. So, you know, that, that, we're very proud of that fund, let's just say. We'll be able to, and we'll benefit packages and make sure that we still stay the course and benefit from that in any way that came, by our own means. All right, finally, that is our food service, but I will cover it in the food service report here. Next, we'll move on to the bond report. Right now, we have received everything that we're gonna receive for the '24 year, where I want you to focus because I told you that on our projects, if I don't need the money because it takes a long time for us to build these buildings, I will go seek it when I need it. So in December, we got our distribution to finish up the two elementaries. You know, those are on target to be completed this year, so later on this year, so you know bills become. So we went ahead, and the interest rate was correct, and our budget handled that to maintain that $10 promise in all five years. So all of these projects are still under that $10. We are due some additional dispersments on from the bonds. In addition to, I just got done telling you that we are carrying expenses for the middle schools. We work with our CBT team. We've watched the interest rate to see when we should get a portion of that money. I will not need it all at one point. And then soon thereafter, we'll begin, we've already started work on a new elementary school. So I'll be getting those expenses in as well. So later on in the year, I will be also getting a bond coming in. So you'll start seeing some resolutions traditionally from your bond council of, you know, telling the lease that we're, like, we incorporated these two projects in because they were pretty ready to go. I just don't need all the money at once. So we were watching what we're doing with even those funds to make sure that the group does not fall on the taxpayer. Any questions on that? Those older bonds, you know, we spend in the locations where those projects were already committed, so as things come up, we do spend them. Summer starts, we got some money preserved in there because we're waiting for the weather to break to get, you know, our shades on our playgrounds and those kind of things. And those are pretty big projects when you get ready to do that, because you gotta make sure that something's in that ground sturdy, hold that shade when a wind comes. So we have, you know, those things are already committed. Some of them have been delivered, not here, they're in the playground vendors' storage, and they're ready to go, so if they can get it done. So we're gonna be going to review those this time. And finally, if I may, with the food service account, Mary Mark. So we ended the year with nearly, $5 million, $4.966. So Chelsea, what, there's some requirements on this federally funded part. You're required to maintain what used to be three months of expenses. They changed it, and we're allowed to do six months, okay? Keep that. We can follow both. We monitor both because the premise of changing from three months to six months is because sometimes that fund fluctuates. So the district was in a situation absolutely no way that they have had three months or six months, okay? Once they got everything corrected, and that was, Beverly was here tonight, you know, helped us get there, we, I would not let them do a spin-down plan. I let them get to a certain level that still maintained the three months, okay? And I told the state, you can ask me for spin-down all you want, until I carry this long enough so sustainable. So we went through a six-month sustainable study, and ironically enough, no, they come back and say, oh, no, you can keep six months. Kind of funny how that works, because I was that adamant on making sure that we just, because we had it, we just didn't spin. So Beverly and I work on spin-down plans. You know, we're getting ready to do phase two at Japai, which is the seating area. And so we also have to spend that every year on our annual report. So sometimes, if the, if the work is still really done or very tight, that project still remains on. And we project future ones, but we're doing so well that we're gonna be able to enhance our each school as we change, and new schools are being placed in, and looking at the students where they land. If somebody needs more serving lines, we're going to look at that. They also take great pride, I went, it takes great pride, in their multiple offerings. So how do we come in to other areas? So on Japai, I can go to get multiple offerings during the day, you know? And we wanna make sure that our high schools are like that, it's chariot style, just like what you would think, where you can choose whether you want salad today or pizza today. It's all there, right? So we wanna kind of incorporate that thought process. And education into nutrition, of course. So I monitor both to make sure that we're still sustaining hope. So we've submitted the spin-down down plan, and our next one is to kind of give the tools in, into the kitchen area to our servers to be able to provide that cooking. So that's gonna show up, because that's gonna be exciting for them, for machinery that they may need. You know, we're always doing equipment replacement. I always try to help out where I can when repairs need to be done, because this is for our kids, and we want it directly for our kids. And when I can help them out with repairs, I can do that. And so that way, we can put all the money back into the school building, the classroom, that all has that same time to. So we're doing great here. This fund that we run on a calendar year in the finance, a school runs on another fiscal period. This one also runs on a fiscal period. But I monitor both ways. I have to report both of those. Do you have 30 and December 30? So I'm really doing two account systems, network systems, but I'm tracking two different ways. We actually do projections on expenses and that kind of thing. So with this one, you're gonna see that it runs from last year July 1. You will see those totals at the bottom of that report, because I pulled those in and add it to the first seven, six months that you see here. So you have a 12-month fiscal period. Okay? Are there any questions on this?
I have a question. It's sort of related, okay? It's about money.
Really?
And it's about federal funding.
Okay.
I know we have some federal monies that we...
We have what?
Well, trying to make a little bit more correct here. There is chatter from the White House that federal funds may be cut. About that, please.
So what's devastating about that proposal is that we have students that need definite push-in programs to help them with either learning opportunities, just all kinds of stuff. So Dr. Hartlidge actually monitors the Title I program, which is huge in every district in the United States. This is to supplement our students, and, you know, it has definitely proven that these funds are absolutely necessary and dire to the success of some of our kids that don't have resources potentially at home. Okay, let's just get right down to the bottom, okay? And so we're able to get those into our schools, and all kids could benefit from them, no matter what. And so that would be quite devastating. I know that the state of Indiana is in the middle of their discussions on how that handles. They are, they have to know that if the federal funding depletes, I have no other resource but to come to them. Now, if they can now release the funds to then take care of that, then yes, all districts are gonna have to look at what they, what they're doing. We do employ a lot of Title I services, teachers. We do counseling. We do all kinds of things, all kinds of programs, parent liaisons. It will be very detrimental to the country across, but for Yack and Stanford, and in Greater Park, it's gonna stand firm. And you see us doing well financially, but that is because we are getting the support here, and the whole chatter is to get money into the teachers' hands. Guess how I'm gonna do that? Continue to federally fund what we got going on here, so I can get the money that you're giving me by regulation and by some legislation, because teachers tell you they can get it $45,000. Push that in.
Well, for clarification, you're talking about the potential future budget cuts or the freeze, because there was an executive order to freeze all government...
And a judge just ruled against that.
We received a memo, I actually got it from David Marcomp, who's the real supervisor, that that, that freeze will not affect the allocation to Title, I D A, Food...
For 10%, yeah.
The main, the main grants which Ms. Hubert is describing are not impacted. It's, it's what they're calling discretionary grants. They're outside of those that we receive. They're like additional grants, so that is what has been frozen.
If that freeze stays in place for any length of time, like, that could affect us. If they keep that in place. We've already received our allocations for this semester, but it could affect even the next year.
It's not any of the formula grants or programs or anything like that, but I think that these are just like additional monies that they make available to various government entities that does not directly flow into our budgeting. So for now, this immediate pause is not gonna impact us.
It's great that we have, regardless of where it's coming from, we have to show sustainability. So, you know, we have, you know, several reports that shows what are you doing in one place, and does that match what you're being given in grant money? So we're constantly doing that as well.
And I understand that, and I will do a great job of that, but my fear is that that may not make a difference in those things. And I just wanna make sure that we have plans to not eliminate teachers.
Correct, correct. And Title I, it's not that good. You know, right now, because we have no freeze on that, is our biggest teacher-supporting one, did you say? Yeah. As far as dollars, I mean, we have funds that 100% of it goes straight to the teacher, but as far as the doc, you're, that's the largest one.
Right now, we're paying attention to a lot of things at the federal level and the state level, whether it's the state-level property tax proposals that impact us severely, not just us, every school district, every city, town, fire department, police department across the state, or, you know, base formula funding or, you know, the federal government's gonna have a, you know, a title funding for future budgets. So there's a lot of different things coming at us. We're monitoring.
Any rules with you? Like, right now, there's things that are going on, and they're gonna change, maybe rewrite, now it's like...
Yes, yes.
You guys, I mean, the governor's property tax proposal was to take $20 million of revenue out of Greater Park. You know, it would take, out of four-way schools, it's something like $50 million. How they expect us to make that up, I haven't, but that's, that's what they're, or how they're going, if they're going to try to make it up some other way. But that's, we're paying very close attention to that.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item up will be the new middle school update.
Thank you very much. My name is Jerry Grips. I'm a partner with Blantyre Associates and a senior project manager for your middle school. Today with me is Colin Lou. He's an architectural graduate and a lead designer on our team. Also, I want to acknowledge the fact that this is my first opportunity to stand before this board. So as such, on behalf of Blantyre Associates, I want to thank you for putting your trust in us for this important project, and assure you, these last eight months, we've been working very hard to provide the service and attention that you deserve and need for an important project like this. And I also want to acknowledge your project team, which made up of Mark, Laura, Nate, Melissa, and Kim. They've been very responsive to us, and we've had a lot of communication. They've worked very hard to answer our questions and make sure that we're working together as a team on the project. I also want to say that on a project of this magnitude, it takes a real team effort from a lot of folks that are specialized in different areas. And just on your screen, I've got some of our design team members listed up there, as well as core construction and construction managers that have been at the table with us all along, helping us to define the budget and making sure that we are in fact staying on that budget. So before I get into the slides and give you kind of an overview of the middle school design, there's a couple of reminders that you are all very well versed on, I'm sure. The new middle school is designed for students in grades five through eight. The building that we have designed right now will house 950 students plus, plus we made provisions in the design for future planning to add another 320 to 340 students total. The building itself is 154,800 square feet. That's a, a big building. We also have a supporting structure for the exterior athletic areas, a concession and restaurant building that's about 4,500 square feet. And then the site overall is 46.5 acres is the total site. This middle school development kind of takes up about 25 acres of that overall site. So I'm pulling up here the overall site plan. Couple things I want to point out here. Of course, you're familiar with the property, and it fronts on Highway 62. You'll know that the property itself is not perpendicular or square with the road that it fronts on, so I'll revert back to that in a minute. Putting a project of this magnitude and size on a state highway comes with its challenges. In-Dot is very particular about what you can and cannot do on their state highway systems. So as such, we did have an engineering... So as such, we did have an engineering firm do a traffic impact study and analysis. We met with INDOT a couple times to review some preliminary information. And what came out of that was recommendations from the engineer that along Highway sixty-two, we've established a right in and right out only entrance to the front of the building. So if you're coming north on Highway sixty-two, you can turn in off that road, right into the building. As you leave and exit the building, back to the highway, you can only turn right. Likewise, if you're coming south on sixty-two, you cannot enter the front of the building. You must proceed down to the stoplight there at U. G. Sallersburg Road. Turn left onto that road and then we have a secondary entrance to the back of the property back there for folks coming from that direction. Secondary entrance became very important. We first got involved in the project, you know, early last summer, the initial thought was additional property to the back was likely to be either sold off or developed for residential housing, that we might bring our secondary entrance to the middle school through that addition. When we got our survey update, we also realized that, I know I pointed, that doesn't work very good on the screen, but just kind of south of the football field and the track, where you see a lot of the vegetation and the trees, there's a pretty good drainage swale that moves down through that area. So any access from that residential development there to the plant east would have a pretty substantial culprit and everything that had to be built to cross that drainage swale, because that needs to be maintained. So when the additional property became available down here where you see that access road coming in, that was very strategic and very important. And we're able to get our secondary access in without going through that property more than likely makes that property more valuable as well, knowing that they're not gonna have that school traffic going through their neighborhood. And it provided a straight shot where we didn't have to deal with that drainage. So that was important. While we're on the site plan, the building itself, you see there, is in kind of brown color. And I made reference to the fact that the site was not square, perpendicular to Highway sixty-two. That had a direct impact on the footprint of the building and how that lays out. You can see there to the back, we've got the athletic areas, tennis courts, football field and soccer field and track. And there's that little concession building off the end of that that you can hopefully see in supporting that. Our areas where we're gonna look to add in the future come off the two wings that come down kind of parallel with the highway. We've got area there on the side to add sixteen additional classrooms on two levels for that additional expansion in the future.
So what will be in those two wings when we open it? Nothing?
Excuse me?
The two wings, talk about their...
The two wings, all right. That's the academic wing where the majority of the classrooms will be.
Oh, okay.
And I'll show you that here in a minute.
If you ever needed to add on with the...
Oh, if you need to add on, I got you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening, I guess.
Couple of things I just wanted to review as we look at a site and lay the site out, some things we've tried to accomplish. Obviously, you want to have a facade or the front base of the building, you know, parallel to and facing your main road where your address is. So we've done that. And in that effort, you want people to be able to identify the entrance to the building without relying on signage. To use your layout, to use your building massing to allow them to easily identify the front entrance to the building. Generally, when we lay out a site, we like to use the building and the surrounding development and terrain and vegetation to kind of protect or screen the areas inside where the kids are gonna be outside, the football fields and tennis courts. There between the two wings as well, we've got an exterior learning and collaboration space that's kind of tucked back in, that is secure between those two wings, not visible from major traffic going by on the highway. And then finally, another important point about site development, we always like to separate the bus traffic from the parent drop-off and pickup traffic. In our configuration here, the buses come in a line at the front door on the front side of the building to drop off and pick up students. They're able to peel away from the curb. Students exiting the bus do not have to cross any traffic paths. And right there at the sidewalk, they can peel away, go to the turnaround there on the upper corner and exit back out on the highway. If they're going south or if they're going east, they'll proceed around and exit out that secondary entrance there in the back. The parent drop-off and pickup occurs on the athletic side of the building. And we've got quite a bit of staff space so we can get more than two hundred cars lined up there off the public road, on your property, waiting to drop off or pick up students. So we've provided ample staff space for that to happen. Oops, it went twice. Here's the first floor. Building orientation shifted a little bit from the site plan. I apologize for that, but if I had a pointer and I worked on the screen, we've got the main, right down from here is kind of the main entrance of the building in the gray area between the bright green and the brownish tone. That's the main entrance. Our building is designed and laid out along very strong circulation axis that goes straight through the building from the front entrance, front, to the exit or entrance for the athletic sides out the back of the building. All the spaces and spaces that require large footprints and large volumes like gymnasiums, cafeterias, those kind of spaces are on one side of this strong circulation axis. You can see we've got two gymnasiums. The green in the middle is the cafeteria that has a stage area. The darker gray is the kitchen and main mechanical room and the performing arts area that are up at the top in the light green, band, choir, art, and theater. The administration area is right there by the entrance, so we have, you know, the security and entrance protocol calls coming into the building, all the administration right there. As you enter, it's kind of hard to see, but we've got a monumental stair that will go up to the second level, as well as a learning riser for the students. And then the two wings in those are each two-story wings. The kind of yellow tone is a typical standard classroom. The blue is a science room. Each wing has nine or ten classrooms in each wing, plus the science room. The orangish red is the special ed area. And then the purple is the media center. And that media center has direct access to the exterior learning, secure learning space, collaboration space that's outside between the two wings. Any questions or things on the first floor? As I move to the second floor, the areas that have color represent the second floor. The white areas are kind of the upper level of the gym, if you will, if you can understand what I'm referencing there. Again, two academic wings, ten classrooms in each wing, a science STEM lab room, and then more special ed rooms on the second level. The orangey-beach tone there is, one right looks down over the media center is the teacher kind of break room area. The other is a large group instruction room at the end of the corridor with interior glass that looks down that long corridor and some nice views out to the football field in that area as well for clubs, special get-togethers, things like that can happen up there. And then at the end of each wing, we've got a teacher workroom, collaboration space for the teachers as well. This is a rendering of the front of the building from State Road sixty-two. You can see our right in, right out there, kind of modest monument sign that'll be electronic. Hopefully, you're picking up the main entrance of the building with the building massing and all the glazing. We've also included there large graphic to help define where that entry is. This is the athletic side of the building. If you're standing over near the tennis courts looking back to the building, the large volume on the right is the gymnasium space for the competition gym. We've got a lot of high glazing glass in there to bring a lot of natural light into that area next to the entrance in that long corridor. And then our academic wing extends down from there. This kind of bird's eye view, the three-dimensional image gives you a little bit better understanding of how the building fits and works together. Again, off the end of each of the academic wings, we can add sixteen classrooms in the future if the need arises to do that. We've got the space on the site and the perfection group has sized some of the mechanical systems to be able to support that. You just connect on the end, you know, a simple way of thinking about it and extending that system out for those future classrooms. This is a view, you come through the front entrance and you go through the protocol and through the office, you're into the building, you're looking straight down that long two-story circulation corridor, as long that I talked about. You can see the monumental stair to the second level, as well as the learning riser right off of that stairway. We've worked with the team to make sure that we've got plenty of areas for smart TVs so communication and information can be made readily available. We've also designated some areas along this corridor for large graphics that will, you know, work with your future teams to define and determine what those graphics might be. You can see our color theme for the building is kind of picking up on the school colors.
Is the elevator in that area also?
The elevator is in that area, just beyond that learning riser. This is a view into the media center. We've got a large two-story volume as part of the media center. Again, all the night, natural light coming in to that space and then access, or access, excuse me, out to that collaboration and learning exterior space that's also secure. This is just an interior shot of kind of a typical classroom. Each classroom, we establish a peaching wall, large marker boards, and a large smart TV in the middle. You can see each classroom has a nice sized window for a lot of natural light into the space. Along the corridor wall, a lot of upper and lower cabinets and countertop space. It's very useful for the teacher in keeping supplies and things within the room. And then finally, this is a view into the competition gymnasium. You understand with the color theme of the school colors, you can pick that up in the bleacher seating and the padding on the end of the wall. You can see high up on that space, again, the natural light coming in and utilizing colors around the court, as well as a nice picture of your mascot in the middle. So that's quite a quick fly-through of the design. If you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer those.
Jerry, do you mind going back? I want to make note of a couple things, because this is a hot topic, obviously, six acres. Pressures. Okay, in this school, go back to the first floor.
Yep.
Yeah, we're maybe more of a hybrid, taking more of a hybrid approach to bathrooms here. You know, the bathrooms up in the academic area, the academic wings are more traditional gang bathrooms, that's what they call them, a lot of gangs, bathroom style bathrooms. But the bathroom suite right there by the gym, you see the little triangle there, those are the single stall, single practice stall bathrooms, twelve of them, right, something like that. Twelve or thirteen, something like that. So we're taking more of a hybrid approach within the school and how we do the bathrooms. And the other thing I want to note, you know, because if you're going through this process and looking at the athletic facilities, you know, it became apparent that for us to go ahead and turf this field was not going to be that much more than a grass field because we're already doing a tremendous amount of next year. You know, so within the documents and the bids, we decided to go ahead and turf this field so that, number one, once again, it goes back to not only our use, but the community use of being able to light it to do soccer and football, so that we can use it and also do an eight-lane synthetic track, so that instead of our elementary's, you know, events, big events always going to gym high, they can now use this. They could also use the six tennis courts and have their elementary and those for tennis championships here also. So it takes some of the load off of gym high to some extent. So moving, moving forward, just be aware that we plan on eight-lane track, synthetic track, and turfing the football field, but lighting is for soccer and then six tennis courts. And we do, as of right now, we have a plan in place to allow community access to the tennis courts, definitely. We're still deciding on track and turf, because we gotta be careful of that, because we don't want kids, you know, riding the bikes around the track and skateboarding on the track and things of that nature. You know, we want to make sure to take care of the children.
Paddock parking?
We do have paddock parking. We exceed the requirements for the city. A lot of it you saw was kind of on the backside, if you will, we've got paddock parking out front for visitors as well as the administrative staff. All right, thank you very much. We did bring a couple of boards that we'll put up here in the back and we were gonna throw some of those.
Thank you.
Okay, next item would be consent agenda. Do you want to add a motion to approve? Motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. So any questions or comments in the administration? Very, now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lose state. Gift to building. Jerry, can you help us, please?
Hey, absolutely. Greater Clark received some East Christian Church, two thousand three hundred dollars for the money keeping for celebration. Also received two thousand dollars for Charles Town Middle School for that DC trip. Money keepers, if you're not, if you have an opportunity, don't. I was holding two. That bus, all those middle schoolers, you walk a lot, it's, it's cold, it's horrible, but it's, it's spiritual. It makes them stronger. I did it and have scarred. I believe that we accept the gift to building in the amount of eight thousand fifty-eight and eighty-seven.
I said it there.
I was on the boy bus, but that's even worse. Those are the worst of all.
Wouldn't hope for personal backup. Well, nobody, boys are traumatized. You mean on the bus. Any other questions or comments? I have said it. Questions or comments? Here again, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, lose state. All right, action items, resolution for supplemental payments. Ms. Allen, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Very good, thanks.
Good. All right, supplemental pay presented is to allow payments to the teachers listed for the specified duties. These payments have been... These payments have been discussed since the main of fierce DCEA president.
Board, I have a motion for that approval.
I approve.
Thank you, Ms. Selton, so do you have a second? Thank you, Ms. Stane. Any questions or comments? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, move stay. Okay, you next to me. Okay, Indiana Early Literacy Achievement.
Okay, we began the Department of Education's Early Literacy Grant was established to reward schools and teachers who are competent in literacy. Greater Clark received fifty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Grant allocations were based on the amount of time each K through three teacher devoted to literacy. Teachers devoting at least seven hundred thirty-five minutes per day will receive a hundred percent of the stipend. Those devoting ninety to one hundred thirty-five minutes will receive seventy-five percent of the stipend. Those devoting forty-five to ninety minutes will receive fifty percent of the stipend. And those devoting thirty to forty-five minutes will receive twenty-five percent of the stipend. The time devoted is based on the twenty-three, twenty-four schedule. The teacher effectiveness rating is also considered in the calculation. Highly effective teachers will receive three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Effective teachers will receive three hundred dollars. This is also paraded to the time that they spent working on literacy. This will be distributed on February fourteenth, paying if you're.
Board, I approve the distribution funds for the Indiana Early Literacy Achievement Grant, we tell us so. Thank you, Ms. Stane. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, move stay. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. More policy updates?
Yeah, board, it's that time again, I think, in honor of the old policies. Obviously, a lot of this has to do with law changes or modifications to the state law. And just a reminder, the process, you know, these obviously go through the old vetting process when we review them as a cabinet. Mr. Freeman has been reviewing those, I think somebody wanted to discuss them. So we hope we like to read. And then, and then we review them one final time in the executive cabinet. And Mr. Freeman's done a great job reviewing those and had some questions this last time, which, so we review them a second time. I think we're in a good spot. They go ahead and recommend that the board approve those updates.
Board, I have a motion for that approval.
Motion to be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, you have a second. Thank you, Ms. Stane. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, move stay. Okey-dokey, contractor agreement with Landshire Associates providing architectural services for the new elementary school. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The school board trustees approved the capital plan, construction of new elementary that will be located on the Salem Mill Road. Attachment's agreement between Greater Clark County Schools and Landshire Associates to provide architectural services for the new elementary school. Rate for these services, three and a half percent, which is fantastic. The estimated total construction cost plus reinforcements is outlined in the attachment. Model of this grant, both this will grant superintendent, more CFO, the ability to sign the contract to great respect for request. Board trustees approved the attached contract with Landshire Associates.
The board approvingly approved the attached contract with Landshire Associates for the new elementary school located on the Salem Mill Road.
I'll say that.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. I'm just digging the three and a half percent.
Hey, we both.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, move stay. Okay, moving right along, board comments, superintendent comments, Mr. Jones. Ms. Selton? Ms. Stane? Yeah. Absolutely, good to hear. Mr. Freeman?
Uh, yeah, I have the pleasure of attending the march that came through a celebration of the Charleston High School. It was last week. You know, I had a really good time. I was happy to donate money and of course I brought my wife there. And she was more than willing to now donate even more, so.
No, it wasn't you.
Not that much more.
I just, so to thank you for taking on the yield of policy, I appreciate that. I won't be bothered with those three o'clock in the morning phone calls by Mr. Freeman going, "Help me, give me all of this." I know it means a lot of artwork and I want to say thank you.
It was five forty-five and then it was up.
But I do want to say thank you.
I'll just hand it bigger back to him.
There you go. Yeah, he did offer that to him. I have nothing else more to say, so I'll shut up.
As you know, we have a work session after this base office, I don't say too much, I know there's a lot of exciting things going on. You know, when you look at the design of this building, it's very, it's a beautiful building, it's also very practical and functional. It will service the district well for the next fifty or so, four years.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Stane, two seconds please. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Done? Thank you so much for the work session, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
I'm going to call for the January 20, 2025 work session. Two orders for the facility plan review.
All right, thank you Board. As you know, every year we come together with a work session to try to figure it on. Not only are we updating our facility, but also academic programming and what's going on. Graduation in that regard and any other, and sometimes the budgets change too this time. Laura, I think she pretty much covered the rest of the company meeting, so we're good. So Laura's got to be fine over here.
I'm also on the budget committee, so.
Last year, we did this in September. Since it was an election year, we wanted to wait to see if there were any new board members that came on. So that we could update them on what's going on in the district, and we didn't have any board members come, so. This is part of making that update. I will tell you, the projected five-year plan. As we go through this, the first two years, frankly, you already approved. You know, we'll go through this. So what I want to do today on those first two years is sort of give you a timeline of when we'll get those things started. So if we go to the first page, the 25, 26 school year, that's what Lancer and Associates just presented. The new middle school project, obviously, it's a big project. We have eighty-five million. The estimate's roughly eighty-five or ninety million. You know, I will let Laura talk down. Turns out, she's going to cover that. But we are confident it will be fine, you know, that we'll have the budget to do this project. The one good thing about this topic with this middle school is we had all the major players involved there. So before we brought this to you guys, we knew what the budget was going to be. Core did an estimate, approximate estimate, and they kept zeroing that estimate in as Lancer got further and further along with the process. So we're pretty confident of where we will be, what we can do. Second item there is the CHS soccer field, turf lights, students building, bleachers. As you know, Charleston High School has some soccer field up there. And what we're going to do is, once Charlestown Elementary is open, and the students are out of Pleasant Ridge, it will be polished from Pleasant Ridge, and that area will become a soccer field. You know, they'll have little buildings, a few turrets, a lot of lights. It'll be lined like we did at Jeff High for both soccer. Soccer will be the primary line, so we'll use it for the line, you know, it's gold posts, so it'll be used for out there. So that's, that probably won't get started until late, late fall, next fall, or early spring. And it's not here, but we have to get Pleasant Ridge demolished, and that's still not the first priority as far as the TJ, or Wilson and JJ will be the two. We gotta get, as soon as school gets out, we gotta get started on the polishing of those two buildings. So once all of those are demolished, then we'll focus on the arms. So third item there is the CHS baseball field, to turf that outfield like we did at Jeff High. That probably won't take place until late next fall, or, or right after the spring of '26 baseball season, of the summer of '26. We've got to time it right because we don't want to take their field out of commission for that. The good thing is the, the concrete nailboards are already, we've got the lines are already poured because they did that when they did the we were thinking ahead a little bit. So that should be a pretty easy, fast process for the group who does that. And then number four is the middle school. As you guys know, we talked a lot about the conditioner in River Valley, Charlestown, Dills, athletic facilities, track, bleachers, scoreboard, tents, you know, we need to do some work on those. And then we get into the, the other items that we've been talking about for the last five years. If you remember back, you know, when we did our feasibility study, Perfection did a study for us also. You know, we had about, I believe it was somewhere around fifty million dollars in roofing work to, to get done over a top to ten-year period. So we're taking that one big bite at a time, and this is another bite of that. We had about, I want to say thirty, forty million dollars in eighth-hand work that needed to be done if you go back five or six years ago. That was deferred, so we're taking another bite of that with this. Painting, there was about six million dollars in painting and sidewalk work that needed to be done if you go back five or six years. So we're, we're getting there on those items. We're probably within a couple of years of knocking them all out, but it's, it's a process. And then obviously tech, we've really tried to amp up what we're doing with security cameras, access controls. You know, just all of that across the board, and that stuff, it's pretty expensive, pretty fast. We're trying to update all cameras, all access controls, do that with these new schools to make them safe and secure. Flooring and furniture, this is a good thing to see along here now because two or three years ago, I was telling you, it's going to be four or five years before we get through flooring, furniture, and stuff like that. We have too many of bigger items to address before we get to that. So we have some buildings that have furniture that's twenty-five and thirty-three thousand or older, and we, we need to address that. Just like we do with bus replacements, which is the next item. And then we have some older buildings in the district that have the original windows and doors also that we need to address. So that, that next item is address that. And then the mistlages repairs that are always popping up are the biggest thorn in my sad, as Chris knows, is the sewer lines at Jeff High.
I care about them for my kids.
I still don't understand why they didn't tear those out fifteen years ago when they renovated the school and put the lines in, bigger lines, but they didn't. So we're dealing with it. You know, more likely, we already know that we're going to dig up a part of the floor in the middle part of the building, middle section, we're going to put a six-inch line in versus four. And we're also looking at the upper part, too, that we may, this summer, we may be digging up a lot of floor, replacing sewer lines with about six-inch pipe instead of four-inch. And it's a good time to do it because we were going to replace the flooring there anyways. So let's get things to get right and tear up the floor now, so we don't have to tear up the floor. Going into the next year, and Board, you've already approved this also. Remember, we had the hearings in November, we had the WDAW meeting, the start of December, so the new elementary. Once again, we were able to get ahead of this by having Core in place, by having Lancer and Associates look at this. We were able to come up with a real strong budget for what this would cause. Initially, we thought it'd be around forty-five million, and Core and Lancer and Associates said, no, you're going to be fifty. So that's why we adjusted that. Then you have the technology, security, that we're still working on. And then the other part of this year was converting the JHS pool into either a wrestling arena or a weight room. We're still sorting through that. Obviously, we can't do anything there until the new pool, you know, get that offline, all that. You know, we're, we're really waiting whether that can be a true wrestling arena, just because seating capacity. And looking at, does it need to be just a really, really nice weight room that would serve all sports?
Yeah, that will have to seem sort of wrestling arena.
Yeah, because we're worried that the wrestling kids might have to move that, no matter what, because they may even transfer it out into Johnson Arena. So we're going to work through that with the JHS cap, look at what our options are beside within the next few months. That's what we want to pursue, whether, whether that area becomes a really, really nice weight room. Which, if you've ever been in Jeff High's weight room, it's pretty bad for a school the size of Jeff High and very small. But also, you know, how can we help out the wrestling, those sports? So we'll, we'll work through that in the next few months. And then, any questions on the first two years? I mean, you pretty much, those are, those are moving forward, you've approved them. You know, the nine lines, I think, the new middle school, new elementary, will, you know, best, best-case scenario is they'll open in July, '27, that the middle school starts construction in May, June, and the elementary starts construction in August, September, and they'll both open in July, '27. Now, getting into '27, '28, as you project into the future, you know, we know that right now, when I left Charlestown High School as the principal, typically, we average about seven hundred and thirty, seven hundred and forty students out there, all seven years I was the principal. We expect Charlestown High School next year to have nine hundred and fifty, nine forty, nine fifty. And we expect that to keep rolling, you know. So we know we're going to have to do something to Charlestown High School in terms of classroom additions, you know. That's what this project is on about. We'll start laying that out in the next six months to year. You know, what we're initially thinking is they would be twelve, fifteen classrooms, add three additional classrooms, you know, additional length of space, probably more cafeteria space, you know, those type of things. And the majority of that structure that we would add would be that area between the front entrance of Charlestown High School and that new locker room development down on the old test course. So that's what we're sort of programing out right now, but we're going to have to start planning for that because, you know, I would, I would guess in the next five years, Charlestown High School will definitely be over a thousand students. In the next ten years, they could have thirteen, fourteen hundred students, if that's what you're talking about. So we have to prepare for this. And the other items, you have the HVAC that we're trying to get caught up on, technologies, again, roofing, usher replacement. Now, if you remember several months ago, I sent you the issue that we have in Washington Middle High with the pool area. Have to shut it in off because of the corrosion and all that. This, this funding would go towards what we, what are we going to do with that space out there? We know, and I think, you know, I explained this to you, that if we try to keep that as a pool, it is extremely expensive to do that out there. And the usage rate of that pool out there is just very, very minimal. You know, so the question we're throwing around and asking and talking to the administration out there in the community is, what else can we do that space so that more kids can use it, you know, in terms of multi-purpose space? So that maybe the rest, maybe we could add a weight room there, the arch routine, and use it. Those, you know, that we could have, we'll get more usage out of it than we'll be able to as far as pools. So we'll, we'll continue to work through that.
Do the students at New Wash use that? Do they do any swimming or?
There were, I think, how many were on the team last year? Seven? I believe there were seven.
I don't mean, do they, do they use it as part of their curriculum? They'll make the kids in there, teach them how to swim?
The elementary school comes over and does a week-long, usually swim with them, but as far as day-to-day, like at P E, it's so hard to find my lifeguard certified that's not already employed somewhere yet.
Yeah, and we've committed to them that we'll transport their swimmers down to Charlestown, so that they can still have that opportunity. But I think the difference was, you know, what we want to do is going to be three, four million, but we try to keep it a pool. You know, obviously, there's, there's a leak, Chris can tell you about this, that there's a big leak from the bottom that was going to be upwards. To, to get it, the air filtration right, keeps the roofing, the walls, reduce pools, you know, all that stuff could be upwards, like, to let it up in the top and turn to a closet here, just to, so, I mean, we, we believe that we could do something else there that the students would use more.
The meetings that we had on that, the adults that came said that the adults would use it. Is any of that happening?
They were, prior to closing it down, they were doing some community swim, but I don't know what the attendance looked like yet, though. There were some staff after school swims and Sunday community swims that they got open.
Okay.
It's something I just want to get on the radar, and we need to work through the community out there on what, what does that space, what do they want that space to look like? And it's not, and what we get used for by students and the community. And then we've talked a lot about this, we put this in the Better Early Learning Center addition. You know, that if we want to increase pre-K, that's a great spot to do it, and we could build, you know, six, eight classrooms on there, play area office, or he has a little kitchen, you know, so it's something we're going to continue to vet, you know, if we want to do that. And then the last item there, number nine, is part of the completion of the Adatorium at Jeff High. We told, you know, we tore down the auxiliary services building, and then we know we're going to need more parking. You know, so we know what, in the budget for the Adatorium, there's already in the budget adding parking spaces back there by in between the soccer field and the Adatorium, and also adding a little loop where parents can pull in, buy the tennis courts and loop around, drop the kids off and back out. But we feel like we probably need a run of the road through there that's safe, obviously, with speed bumps and all that, that connects to that, close to that light, or right here at the light on 10th Street, where you can drive through there. And so it would be another way to get back there, but also add parking where the old service building was, and also right where that berm is. Basically, we agree that on where, so we have plenty of parking for all, everything that's going to happen there, those tennis bases for all soccer, the Adatorium, whatever. Because we do believe there will be some rather large events out there in that Adatorium. And it will be a significant draw, and we believe that's actually a problem. So that's, any questions on that for '27, '28, for what we're trying to accomplish? Going into '28, '29, once again, we're looking at Charlestown again as far as additions, residual additions, classrooms. We know their population is very growing steadily. They're about, what, unless it's six hundred and fifty, six seventy? We feel like they're going to be over seven hundred in the near future, knocking on the door of eight hundred, you know, and we're going to need more space up there. So that's, that's, you know, what we can remark there. And we get back to the paving, curbs, sidewalks. This is another nice thing to see, the mistlages repaired, mistlages repaired as far as furniture doors, windows, floor. Tuck pointing, that's big. We have two or three buildings that are brick buildings that definitely need some, some work on the border joints and tuck pointing. I think, Chris, you, you got the specimens on that, what happens to different people on the, on the tuck pointing, on the brick?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, but we have a need, especially at Jeff High and a couple other brick buildings, that we need to start addressing them. And then the other thing that we're looking at in this year is Utica, North Haven, the bathroom renovations, flooring, painting. You know, Utica has the original bathrooms, stalls, you know, since North Haven, you know, getting there, renovating those, you know, updating those. And then once again, we have some money there for the JHS first, if needed, I think, all that's right, and going to the roofing. People have realized that to re-roof Jeff High, I mean, fourteen million dollars, Chris? If we try to do all of it at the same time, it'd be four, at least, just fourteen, fifteen million dollars just to re-roof Jeff High. That's why we're doing sections. You, what are your other third section now, I think?
Yes, so we've got, yeah, we've got two, and this will be the number.
How many?
Depends on how small or big, we break them down. There's, there's several of them. We're doing two, probably twelve different sections. I mean, we'll need to make them bigger or smaller, that's all.
Any other questions on, on this one? And then you get into '29, '30, this is where we remark the Parkview renovations. I will tell you, you know, obviously, when the new middle school is done, we're going to move everybody up there. We're going to get them off that site in Parkview. And then we are going to have to decide in a little time, what do we do on that Parkview site in terms of, do you try to renovate the old building and make it a, maybe a smaller footprint, hold six, seven hundred students instead of eleven hundred students? A lot of people will know that that building will hold eleven hundred students as a center, you know. I don't know that you need that big of a footprint there if we're going to have this River Valley and the other middle school up here. And Jerry brought it up, and also, when all of this is set down, you potentially go to a five-through-eight model.
Yeah, that was kind of a surprise when you said that.
Well, yeah, I would only recommend that to the Board once everything's done, you know. But because it, because we, once everything's done of the new middle school, of Parkview, you have plenty of middle school space at that point, and then if you went to a five-through-eight concept at that point, it would open up a bunch of elementary space. So for a pre-K or a homeschool, but we're going to have to turn, you know, do we, do we renovate this old one, you know, try to increase the footprint? Or do you polish it and start over? I know what my recommendation would be, Nate's recommendation would be. Because I think if you demolish it and start over, then you can really get what you want on that site and make it easier to get in and out of that site. You know, and just redo the layout, because it's, I mean, I was there for seven years, John was there, it's a rough, it's rough getting in and out of there. You know, it's, it's bust, man, it's, you know, so, but we have time to, to think about that one. But I do believe this year is probably the appropriate year to really dig in on that because I do believe as down in Jeff, start turning over, make arrangements move in, as we have the growth in other places in Jeff, that we'll need something there, you know, we need, for we're going, these, we'll definitely need something there. So then you're, then you're back, you're had, just be thinking about, you know, do you demolish or do you just, or entrap it in a, you know, it's, it's a seventy-year-old building, try and set it.
And these kids at Parkview would be going to the River Bridge, regardless of the setting?
Yeah, so we have to get them off that campus.
And that they might eventually use whatever is there.
Whether you renovate it or demolish it, we got to get it out of the way. There's no way you can do any, even, there's no way to do any kind of renovation there with seven hours students.
I think we're going sixty-something.
I think it's sixty-two.
Sixty-seven.
Yeah, but I will say, it's a well-built building. It's sturdy. Well, I'm surprised, it always shocks me when I'm saying sewer problems at Jeff High, Parkview, and that is playtime, you know, so. Yeah, I, you know, it's a couple. You know, but we went down and presented, well, Jerry's presented to the staff, you know, was on Nate this afternoon, just to give the answer, well, it's coming out tonight, all the new middle school. So they, you know, they had a lot of good questions, and they also, you know, the thing I remember most is you think we're going to have more than one electrical outlet, never? Like, yeah, you'll have more than one electrical outlet.
You think we'll have three fronts? It'll be a three-front outlet.
Yeah, yeah. And it won't be the European style. But we do need to start really digging into, all right, what, what do we want to do in Charlestown High School? The additional line is Charlestown, and this project is Parkview, you know, so. But I think in the community, you're going to get asked, well, what's going to happen in there with the kids? But we have to get them, like I said, we have to get them off that campus to do it.
But if we get them off the campus into our new middle school, would, would we start something at the Parkview site immediately, or?
It would be, it would coincide, maybe we'd have a year of planning. Have we done any kind of study, and I probably just, in regards to, we've already approved neighborhood footprints in Charlestown that we know, you know, we know is much of ours, that's, I'm just thinking in terms of home live folks, that we kind of have a projection where the high schools go, numbers, I guess is what that's. Yeah, I mean, what we've been told by, you know, the mayor, city council of Jeff, and also mayor city council of Charlestown, that in between Jeffersonville and Charlestown, all that overland, that there's two thousand homes already planted. And when you calculate in David Christian on his development, you know, and what's going on.
And when you calculate in David Christian on his development, you know, and what's going on, uh, on Charlestown High, and then why you did that, and then, like the neighborhood I live in, there's still a hundred eighty lots of people on, uh, in my neighborhood. So it's, now, things have slowed down a little bit because of interest rates, but, you know, we, we still believe that, you know, talking to the mayors and the city council, and developers and real estate people, that once interest rates fall, you know, it'll go down, things will go crazy.
There's six hundred and five houses going south, a hundred and forty acres for being, there's two hundred eighty-eight built in behind. Six hundred and five homes, and you could reach, you could hand somebody toilet paper.
Not from the window.
Yeah, there's still.
Plenty of homes with land out there.
I know.
From the key behind the door.
I know.
So, yeah, we're trying to stay ahead of it, you know, and we'll keep working.
I, yeah, just, but it's, we know Charlestown has to use a progress. One last thing I will tell you, when you think about what are our concerns, you know, when, when I first came in this position, Laura came, Laura, who started working with Stiefel and all our team over there, you know, we committed to that knowledge impact, you know, we've been there for six years now, I believe, more. You know, with what's coming at us from the state in terms of potential property tax, you know, capitalism. And also, we weren't planning for this last thing, you know, we weren't, if you remember, we compromised a little bit in terms of saying that we would do something at Parkview. And I agree that we need to do something there, but we didn't totally plan for that as we were jacking out our years with Stiefel. You know, depending on, on what happens with the property tax proposals that are going through the legislature, and what happens with growth, you know, sets value and all that. I mean, I don't want to say, there may be, uh, we may be in a position in the next couple of years, a few years, where we may have just the tax rate up, you know, a few cents here or there. I'm just gonna be very transparent and honest. I don't think it's gonna be anything like our neighbors over, you know, to the west of us, that are looking at a thirty-eight cents increase.
Is there math ups or are you giving more than thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, there's sets value up a little bit, you know, but certainly, we may have to look at that with Stiefel, especially when we're headed in this fifty-five million dollars, that's a big chunk. And when we were originally working through everything with Stiefel, you know, projecting it out, you know, five, ten, fifteen point years, you know, it may not be out of question, and Laura feel free to speak. You don't have to be quite on that, we may have to increase it a bit.
So we, we've prepared studies with Stiefel on a one penny to three penny increase to see what impact that would have. And it will help, you know, because we know prices can go up, of course, we're talking twenty-nine, thirty. But, you know, I've yet to prepare. I was prepared for staffing with any new buildings I had at this point. And remember, your only revenue for staffing comes from students. So if we're just, if there's staff numbers that I put there, there's a whole, I'm ready for a brand-new elementary, got you, ready for that. Boarding them over there, unless we get more students, right, then that will pay for that, otherwise, I'm just adding staff. So I have, and to accommodate that, then that, that's not as much as you go into your operations. I, you know, so then your operations, which is gonna be affected by potential legislative taxes, we have to look at that, we just have to. We are still under threshold with cap in a lot of areas. So the impact would be not so grand on every, uh, we do have a lot of people that have the cap, a lot more than what you think, that it will be impactful from zero. You know, we still have certain brick room plays, there is a cap on, on there, so, um, that's what we have to kind of figure. All of those factors, not just the price of bricks and mortar and nails and hammers, it, we have to look at the whole, whole piece.
And I think, you know, to be transparent and very honest about Parkview, and I, I don't want anybody to believe that, oh, we're just playing games, aren't doing anything there, because I do believe we're gonna have to do something there. But I think, in, in future enrollment will drive that decision. And what will drive that is how many homes, these homes get built over the next three, four years, how many apartments get built. You know, it, it very well may come to a point where maybe you don't have to do this in twenty-nine, thirty, maybe you do it in thirty, thirty-one. You know, I don't think that'll happen, but it very well could, depending on the economy and how fast they actually build. And most of the things enrollment in certain areas. Uh, if you remember back when we did demographic study several years ago with Jerry McKibben, uh, he was very, um, straightforward with us about the need to get schools out here, uh, passed around, because that's where the significant growth is gonna happen, you know. So, we, we need to do something there, it's just, when, when you hit the green button and say, let's go, let's get going. Any other questions?
Do you think you would, would you do something with that, or are you, even though we're not ready to do, to put anything there? Or would you, are you gonna leave it and decide what?
I think we gotta decide, like, how fast we're gonna move, because obviously, if the new middle school gets done in twenty-seven, I hope it's for the twenty-seven, you know, I think we'll have a clearer picture then of what's enrollment look like, what's going down, and what's going on in Jeff. You know, and then if we go ahead and.
So what's, we move the kids out there, and we decide not, say we decide not to remodel it, or, you know, keep it. Would you go ahead and demolish it?
That's probably.
Because I mean, why would you wanna keep an upkeep on building?
That would, that would be what I would propose, yes. Knowing that somewhere in the near future, we're gonna do something on that. Does the maintenance, just the things we dealt with at Bridge Point, when we did that with, uh, broken windows and, you know.
You're gonna keep eating in there and there, and, you know.
So, we, we gotta sort through that, and a lot of that, what will determine that is enrollment growth, how fast, some of these neighborhoods, you know, must get, get going. Is there things in there that we love, very good, that we need to, we need to deep? Yeah, Chris and I talked a lot about that in May, and then, you know, there's some HVAC in there, some up chillers, boilers that we could certainly use somewhere.
Yeah. We put some units in here, since we've been here, that these will be moved to other places.
I know that we have to move the kids out if we're going to do something to the building. But what's the purpose of moving them out if we're not gonna do something? Well, not, not all of them are gonna go to the new middle school, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, all, all of them.
Yeah, we would do all.
You remember back to the meetings we had, when they said, these kids, these downtown kids are not gonna go to the new middle?
Well, short-term, they would have to.
I mean, why, why would we not just let them stay there until we start to do something?
Well, you know, it very well could.
Yeah, because if we take all the kids to the new middle school, I think it's one, you remember how I talked about it, and I wanted to hear a parking down there, but. I'm just thinking back to those meetings we had, especially the one we had at the city county building, or the city hall. You know, I think we, I think we made a.
That'd be the issue as far as staffing and proper, you know, if you have a small amount of students there, what can you offer?
But I believe that is the belief of some people.
Yeah, well, but I think they'd have to understand.
We have to do some work on it.
For us to do anything on that site, there can't be students there.
Right, I agree with that, and I think everybody would agree with that, but if you're not gonna do anything on that site, why are you moving that kid who lives next door to the school? I think that's a little start here.
And we agree with this timeline. I mean, this is sort of what we thought through, uh, based on a lot of factors, you know, growth, enrollment, developments, budgets, tax rate.
On the flip side, if they all go to the new middle school, and they all like it, and they get over all that crap about having to be downtown, that'd be pretty important.
Well, even at that, I still think we need to do, well, we'll need to do something at that site. I think that's, I think that's.
For some reason.
Teresa, at that point, based on the studies that, you know, we've had by all the entities and imperfection, assuming that we can get this middle school done and get those kids out and decide what we're gonna do, even if it takes us a year, we demolish, it takes us a year to get our planning in, depends on what the budget allows us to do, that will create the pain of it. We can no longer, I mean, this, this building will do much like what, what buildings we're doing to you, rent you broke. So, you know, if we get an opportunity to get those kids in that learning environment, so we can, but demolish, look at all the data, we should be able to come up with a plan of what's going on there. So I project, based on budget-driven data, and, which comes into demographic data, and our manpower and data, and our finances, we're gonna have to put them all over there, because it'll be very short order. You know, it's, it's not about, you know, what it like, every, you know, kids can choose to go where they want, very.
Right.
You know, I mean, so it's about really managing the whole picture on a building. So I doubt that if we were gonna sit here and think that we're not gonna do anything, because it would be too costly, because it's costing us now. You see what I'm saying? So we're, assuming we can.
I'm just cautioning us that.
Yeah.
When we do that, and we move them all to the new school, or whatever, I think we need to have a plan for Parkview in place, whether it's we're gonna tear it down in this year, or we're gonna remodel it in this year. I think we have to have that plan ready to almost hand out to, as we move, because if not, you, you gave up on this or something.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I can see it coming, my way.
I will tell you, one of the other unknowns is, you know, like, we could flip this year with the Charlestown middle school, right? Or twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or just flip it. The other unknown is, you know, in our current environment, we have a lot of kids that live out here past the route.
Absolutely.
That are taking advantage of the choice routes and going to Charlestown Middle.
Right.
When this new middle school is right here down the road, I would say most of those kids won't go to Charlestown Middle. They're gonna go to this new school.
They won't start there, they may finish there, but, yeah.
You know, and so, that, that may delay the need for us to do anything in Charlestown Middle for a few years versus. So we, we just sort of need to see how it plays out.
Yeah.
How much of a plan do we have to have in place to satisfy the one dollar? Well, when you close school, you have to, you know, the board has to pass a resolution to close school, and you have to designate what you're gonna do with that school. Within that resolution, you have to designate, are we, are we closing it, uh, using it for more than fifty percent storage? Or, uh, alternative classroom space, or are we closing it, or demolishing, to do something else on that site? So we have to.
Also, it's like, how much detail do we have to actually have of that?
It has to be in fairly, uh, fairly detailed terms. I, I don't know if it has to, you know, if you have to have a specific start time and end time as far as construction and all that. But I think within the resolution, you'd, you'd have to be detailed enough to say, we are going to do something at this site, and here's where we anticipate that starting. We can certainly talk to, Michelle Cooper would be the one to draw that resolution for us.
I don't know if we have any example of blueprints already, I'm like.
Most districts, uh, don't, because you're, in that case, you're spending a lot of money for something that may not, you know, come to fruition.
Right.
Especially districts that are doing referendums and things like that, you know. But you, you're, you're spending a lot of money on something where you haven't even had hearings, um, that may not actually happen. There could be a pushback on this. You know, you're gonna waste. But, you know, there's still some unknowns there, because I do believe, you know, unless I could chime in on this too, that a lot of those kids that are going to Charlestown Middle will come back to us in school. And think, think like the Charlestown Middle, do they go to Jeff High, or do they go back to Charlestown High?
Well, it depends on, I think we'll continue to offer those choice routes, especially for the high school, you know, and probably the middle school.
To answer Laura's question, I mean, we've only been doing it a few years, but the trend looks like those that go to Charlestown Middle, they're going to be into Charlestown High School.
Yeah, I figured that, I didn't know if that came out of Jeff's Peter Middle School, they would try, they would affect the growth in Charlestown, basically, is what I'm getting at.
That's one of those that would make help us with Charlestown.
Because you're gonna have, you know, an elementary right there on the Sable Temple, where all of those kids in that choice route up by A. We go, and then they're gonna have a new middle school right, if you did have Sable Temple. You know, now what they do for high school, that, you know. That's great, I know. A lot of my schools you go to.
Yeah.
You'll have to go right.
You should love it in the fight.
Right, you're gonna love it. So what's, we'll keep updated on, as this plays out. Right now, uh, the good news is, I think, Lord, I'm talking next December, uh, we won't be having a hearing for you, bringing a hearing, any kind of hearings to the table next December or January, probably till, what, December of?
The following year.
Yeah, the following December or January, so, this, you know, we won't be asking you to approve any big projects or any big models or anything.
Yeah.
Next, one last item, I wanna throw that at you. Okay, uh, you saw that the name of the middle school, River Ridge, uh, middle school, the River Ridge Patriots, it's red, white and blue, the colors. Obviously, we're moving forward with the only Sable Temple Road. We agreed with the family, uh, when we bought that property, that we would name it Founder's Point Elementary, uh, because of the historical significance. Supposedly, if you don't know the historical significance, supposedly, you know, Clark County was the second county's former, Indiana, the high B- county, who was. But supposedly, the meeting was held on that front, on that bridge, because we're deformed Clark County. You know, so the family was adamant about, could you have, you know, the name Founder's Point, some reference to that. We were fine with that, I think it's sort of a neat, neat name, but now we gotta take the mask off and cover. You know, so, Karen is going to run some by you, we'll get your thoughts, and if you want us to add more, um, examples to the list, we can.
So, um, we've just done some brainstorming, and know that all of this is just like things we've stolen off the internet. I, you gave a little credit at the bottom, because whatever we choose, we would work with our graphic partner to like, come up with a unique version of whatever Founder's Point would be. So, um, we have these three things that some members of our team brainstormed to get the conversation going. This is different than the other elementary processes, because we don't really know exactly where our stakeholders are, because we, we haven't done that boundary line work yet, and but we, in the design process, um, we have to go ahead and know early what color schemes are, because that's, that is essential. Yeah, so, um, we have, uh, the first option to talk about is the penguin. Uh, I can tell you that through the other processes we did with Pike and Parkwood, the penguin was popular in the, in the early stages. It made it to like final rounds and such, um, I think because of the alliteration there maybe, uh, but also, just for a long time, both really like penguins, so we.
I like the mean-looking penguin.
Yeah.
You can't, you, you can't find a penguin looking at.
You've gotta be careful, because you're gonna lose us quicker than an elementary after one.
Okay, well, uh, no, but with a penguin, it would be completely unique to our area, there, and, and it does have.
I mean, penguins are indigenous to Clark County, I can see why.
Yeah. Yeah, we did find that elementary students really liked the alliteration, and it would give us a little bit of that, Founder's Point penguins. All right. So, um, we have a lot of birds in our country, we do have a lot of those. All right, the other, another option we're looking at would be the pioneer. Um, Mr. Loffner already explained the historical significance, so we threw around pioneers, explorers, colonials, whatever. We landed on the pioneers because of the alliteration, again, I, that's something we've learned through our previous processes, that kids do kind of favor that. It wouldn't be unique to our region, because we do have some pioneers that are close to us, but.
Oh, that, that's what you mean by unique to our, because there are no other penguins.
Yes, I think that the penguins were.
I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry, I'm just...
But it would, it would give us some historical significance to the Founder's Point name. And then the other piece is Vikings. Once again, we don't have any Vikings here locally in terms of mascot. And, um, there is, uh, local folklore and legend tall tales associated with possible Viking collection of the Charlestown area, that's in the fourteen mile range.
I love that.
So, there, I, I have not been able to find any article that said there is actual archaeological evidence, but it is strongly rooted...
That's because Vikings don't leave anything behind.
Yeah. It is strongly rooted in folklore legend, um, of our area. So, we wanted to, for good.
Um, I hate to say this, but penguins to my, and this point is my favorite, but I do love penguins as well.
That's right.
Um, they are adorable, I mean, that one's too happy, but that one's too mean.
Yeah.
What?
The penguin was perfect, this one.
No, that's just, you guys missed the short end of the story. I do like the water ones. So, I would be fine, honestly, with any of those. The pioneer probably makes no sense, I don't know if that's gonna be in Providence, like, what, uh, I mean, because of Providence pioneers, but I mean, nothing really pioneers that.
We thought about that, but this elementary's never on play.
That's true, everyone has elementary school, right?
Isn't New Providence is really down that year? Really, that elementary's really good. No, I just meant they play the high school, their feeder, second yard. Why do this help us recover from there? It's a big idea, like, I...
You want the alliteration, I like the pioneers, but I also accept the Vikings, so I think you should just...
Or we want your feet there.
Thank you for saying that.
I say penguins or Vikings.
Literally, literally, we all said we liked the pioneers, right about me, people. I was, and Chelsea, and I did, and he's asleep, he wasn't listening.
I feel like there's a negative connotation with Vikings.
I didn't, I felt that way too.
There's some under...
Look at the cute guy. And did you see that, um, that Silent Night movie with the guy? And he was saying, uh, but he, I was actually...
I'll tell you about, my favorite, my original was pioneers, one, two, three.
It's probably the pioneers. I think you should just choose, I don't think this, in this case, this is, I mean, I don't care. I'm excited.
Also, we have to be black and white.
What, you wanna...
Yeah, so, and then you're about color combinations, and I, I have a couple of points to make with where this school will be located. Those school, those kids will be, they'll be split. They, some of them will be future Red Devils and some of them will be future Pirates. Um, we don't want, you know, it's easy in like New Washington and, um, the Charlestown Elementary, like, they're gonna have no natural higher than that unless they have an identity from day one.
Right.
These kids won't know what they're gonna be yet, and we're gonna, some of them will have that corridor of choice, so we don't wanna like, is they were red or blue, you know, I don't know. There's a lot about that identity piece that we don't wanna make it look like Grandma Clark is saying, you should be a Red Devil, or you should be a Pirate. So, um, we also like for our elementary schools to have, we, we've tried, we've got a lot of red in there, but the accent colors, we're trying to make sure that they are not, you know, we don't wanna go back to, we had three Pirates that were all blue and white. Um, so, we've got, um, green and gold, purple's gold, black and gold is our first round of thoughts. We don't have, um, outside of New Washington, we don't have another school with gold as an accent color. And we don't currently have any schools with, um...
Green or purple.
Well, sorry, because where is green? Um, but thi- this color combination doesn't remind me of any of our schools when I look at them, you know, any of the three of them, so.
Uh, here's purple and yellow. That's what I like. I like that last one.
I'm a LSU fan, so...
I like the purple.
I say pioneers, purple and gold. I think we approve all the others.
That's a Viking, purple and gold.
We don't wanna be like those.
Your mother's purple and gold.
No, we, we just want these are people.
Okay.
We have a major session.
It's just a work session, we just open to your suggestion.
No, I was like...
Karen, I mean, ask her, I want you.
Okay.
What's number one for you, what's number two, what's number three?
I would be fine with any of them or any of those color combinations. I do see Clark's older at the end a little bit with the generals. Um, but this is an elementary school, what, what did you say?
What's in the taking?
Oh, let's take the pioneers and the black and yellow and just...
Okay, can I make a point, because this is a work session.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I don't wanna, wish that I had said this.
Okay.
That I talk about that identity piece of like, we don't wanna like represent red or blue from the beginning. Also, the purple actually kind of, red and blue make purple, so it's like, it's what, those are kind of like that.
Oh, I love that.
On the other, um, in this, in this area, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but if we dug into it, um, is that a region where we have a higher percentage of people shooting private schools? And so, again, that identity piece, that's the only thing to think about with pioneer. Like, would that, well, I wasn't pioneer and now I'm gonna go be a pioneer somewhere else? Like, just something to think about, but it is also...
So, you think we're grooming them, which is my ears, basically, so it's... You said, I mean, you kinda said, you're a little bit...
I said identity, um, you know, whatever, but I, I just wanted to put it out there in terms of...
Okay, Vikings, purple and gold.
You changed my mind.
You changed your face.
I'm sick of it.
This is why we're not holding tonight, it's for you to be...
How about this, you think that, and we'll email you at long term. You put it in, you put it in rate order, rate order mascot, red, white, or orange?
I think we all agree purple and yellow, right? We just need to do a mascot.
Except for Keith, he says black.
We all have the same.
Sound red, red and blue.
I would like to recognize that this has been the most fun part of this, of Founder's Point.
All right, so, so let's...
We'll be prepared to start that part.
Then we'll help, we'll help you draw what you're gonna order.
I'll land this to a survey that he'll send in.
Oh, yeah. Put you up for one thing, we've got two or three.
That's the most fun I've had all day.
All right, I promise, we'll be fast, we've been sworn that, our names, yes, put under strict guidelines, we know we're tired, so. All right, um, tonight, I'm here with, um, some members of our academic team, as you know, Misses and myself, our directors and our coaches. And we meet, um, pretty much weekly and, um, think about an organizational structure in which, um, ideas, brainstorming, decision-making, filters, with Mark, joins us through the academic team. Um, we have lots of different perspectives that come to the table and then we strive to really build capacity through our admin council meetings. We meet monthly, these topics that we're gonna share with you. Um, we work with our administrators and then they take it back to their leadership teams and then on to our teachers and all of our staff. So, um, and certainly, these ideas also come out of cabinet. But, um, tonight, I've got with me Melissa Bauer, Director of Secondary and Technology, Karen, Dr. Karen Rusley with Elementary, she oversees our assessment, and Ms. Brooke Lannan, who oversees our special populations. So, one of the first things that we, it's really, um, when we started our work six years ago, was to really define and clarify the systems that work synergistically to build, uh, opportunities for our students in optimal learning environments. Um, and these are divided between academics and pedagogy, which is the how, how do we make the magic, you know, take the content, turn it into magic and really solidify the learning, as well as, um, the building a positive culture of achievement. Because ultimately, that's what we're always striving to do, is to grow and change and achieve high levels of achievement. So, recently, the state, um, has revamped our standards and they've come out with lots of fantastic resources that years ago, those of us that have been around, we used to have to create these ourselves. Um, they are aligned to all the standards, they are item specifications for our assessments, I read, I learn, and, um, specific performance level descriptors that align with the categories on the test of, um, approaching proficiency, above proficiency, proficiency, approaching proficiency, and below proficiency. So, it really provides a framework for teachers to use in their planning and make certain that we are hitting the targets and the level of rigor that students need to be able to do to manipulate the information and ultimately build strong levels of understanding. Purposeful planning, that goes back with our work with John Hattie and teacher clarity, that, um, we're very clear in what we're trying to achieve. We want students to know, in the end, this is what we're learning to do and you will be able to do. And from that, we design our assessments, um, we utilize summative, formative, overt assessments all the way through the units so that ultimately, they, um, achieve the success of those standards in the end. Um, data analysis has been a big focus this year. Um, we're gonna talk about the data wise process in just a minute, how we've broken that down. But, then we move into the pedagogy. What is it that we want all of our teachers, within a lesson, um, what needs to be happening so that students can connect with the content and, and have a better understanding? And we talk about the gradual release of responsibility of the I do, we do, you do in some capacity, it doesn't have to be in that order, but that's something that we make certain that all of our, um, incoming teachers, our veteran teachers know how to frame those lessons so that there's some smooth, um, uh, consistency throughout and they're constantly checking for understanding. Then, um, we think about the meaningful learning experiences. Is there a way to build up that magic and bring the lessons to life, which we call the art of teaching through these various bulleted points? We know from Hattie's research that these particular items have the highest effect size when we're looking at how students learn and mastering, um, the material. Positive school culture, this, all of these things really, um, encompass our pride programming. We've talked about committing to common expectations, restorative practices, using a common language, collecting data. This is both for academics and behavior across, um, all factors of a child's development. Um, we have our pride kickoff, we've provided, um, programming for weekly lessons and character strong that all of our schools do. Um, and then we recently adjusted one of our, uh, feedback tools where our principals go into the schools, they have some criteria that they interview principals, they interview staff members, they interview students. And that's what we call our pride SEL, school-wide feedback tool. We utilize that information to really assess ourselves and determine where we are with the, the level of culture and how our students, um, have internalized our pride, um, expectations. And then, the multi-tiered systems of support, often to, often that is referred to as NTSS, and that is really how we develop tiered, um, levels, starting with the core instruction in tier one. And if students are not successful, we use our data and then we create alternative lessons, interventions to help achieve success with those students. It's all based on data. Um, it also plays into, ultimately, if they are not succeeding, we provide tier two. And then, we will monitor that after a certain period of time, continue to, or come back to the table with the data. And ultimately, if they're not achieving, then we could move into tier three, which is our most intensive and often, um, then becomes our special education services. So, those are our top expectations. The next, um, big focus that we've really relaunched this year is our data wise, um, programming, which is an eight-step process that was brought to us several years ago through Harvard University. And it is a way to make instructional shifts and ultimately improve, um, student performance and student, school improvement. So, here's the swoosh, um, it's divided up between three different phases, prepare, inquire, and act. And these are eight manageable steps that will help educators build confidence and skills in using data to drive instruction because we have to meet our students where they are. And we also have focused on the fact that we're not just responsible for teaching, but ultimately, we have to be responsible for the levels of learning that happen in the classroom. Within this swoosh, what we've done this year is, um, we've presented and really dug into two steps each month. Um, we've given our administrators homework to go back and introduce to their leadership teams and sort of just really gotten familiar with each step of the process with some days to practice along the way. And then, actually, in just a couple of weeks, we're gonna culminate this um, as we align it to our school improvement plan template, which is called NSUP. And we've, um, utilized the same language throughout, um, the data pieces are going to be within that. Um, the big focus of this too is, um, they come up, using data, they come up with a priority question. Where are our students, what are they struggling with? And then we identify in step four, through the data, what our learned-centered problem is based upon the data. And then, how are we gonna respond to that? We have to look at that in our instructional practices and to identify the problem of practice or the things that we need to improve upon, um, with our teaching. And from that, you work through collaborative groups to develop an action plan and then, of course, you're going to assess the progress and then adjust accordingly. And that's pretty much the gist of it. It is, the foundation of it is on these three things, action, collaboration, and evidence. But it has to constantly focus where teachers are working in groups and looking at data from their students, pretty much on a weekly basis to know. Um, we, within this, you can do what they call mini-cycles, um, on specific things that you know, um, as we go through the year, like we just finished our I-Learn checkpoint data two. So, this would be a perfect time for our administrators to work with the teachers to identify those areas that they want to really hone in on and, and give our kids a little extra dose of, um, opportunities to master those particular areas. So, then the final bullet points there outline essentially what it is. You work together, collaborate, collaboratively determine that focus area, what is a priority question, the learned-centered problem, problem of practice, and then action assess and then act assess again. But we have found that that has been very beneficial. Um, it's a, a constant revisiting of not only what do our students need, but also, um, helping us to really reflect upon our practices and how we can, um, improve the educational process.
Yes, on, on this problem of practice, yes, just, I wanna touch something, I'm sorry. That's okay. Um, besides just fidelity, are they doing what they're supposed to do with teachers, instructors? How else is that assessed, or how else is that, tell me more about that?
Well, the problem of practice, and that's step five, and part, a big part of that, how you begin that, is classroom observations. And it is, it's really working with your teachers and specifically your leadership teams. When you talk about classroom observation, this is a big, and you know, as a former educator, we are starting to observe classrooms, but not through an evaluative lens.
Right.
But we're looking at classrooms through, um, what does the classroom sound like? Is there conversation, what is the level of questioning? Um, what wait time, transition time, all of those different pieces. So, that is, um, a big shift because number one, as an administrator, have to figure out a schedule. a schedule. How am I going to get teachers in other teachers' classrooms?
Right.
But before I do that, how am I going to build the trust and the culture? It's going to take a lot of front-loading so that when this starts, or when they initiate this, everyone's on the same page. So there's going to need to be a lot of work and coaching training on what's the purpose of it? What are we looking for? We're not just watching the teacher, but we're looking at the classroom and the levels of learning or lack thereof. And then that's how we kind of come up with, you know, we did this many visits, we saw that we, our PD plan, which is also a later of our NSUP plan, we've been working on this particular topic. And so it really is, that's a big part of this. We really emphasize that.
Are you getting pushback?
Not really. At our last session, we had, we started off with a protocol called Hopes and Fears. And then they worked in teams and kind of talked about this. I think they're, you know, after going through COVID and then we sort of had to revisit, okay, now it's time to tighten up with academics again. And we did the work with Hattie, we know what gives us the biggest bang for our buck. And they're really ready for this. And that's why we've taken this whole year to kind of present it slowly because actually in two weeks, they're going to see our new template, our NSUP template, which this is embedded throughout. So they can begin the work for next year. We've sort of launched this year, but our hope is full implementation for 25, 26. But they will be able to start these conversations and the foundational pieces to really make this kind of fruition.
I think a good example, like a mini-cycle, I'm just trying to recall back what we worked on when we started this process, I was principal, I was like, we know on I-Learn or ISUP or post-organized tests, there's some type of question that's a response to task. You have to retext, respond to. And we always found that our students weren't citing enough evidence. And so is that a, you know, that's a learned center problem, but what's the problem of practice? Why are our kids not understanding that they have to cite more evidence? So how do we, as the teachers, figure out? How do we get them to cite more evidence? You know, answers, a response to tasks.
Groups are discipline specific.
All right, purposeful planning, providing teacher clarity.
All right, I, I really liked this slide because when we first, middle of COVID, we needed to frame our brains back around academics when that whole first semester, it was about just mitigating logistics. And while we weren't having in-person meetings, we ended up taking our admin council and having them invite an instructional leader to go through a book study on teacher clarity, which is out, that's John Hattie's coined phrase for really backwards design, you know, understanding your standards and then making sure that everything we do is intentional. There's other researchers that call it something different, you know, but that's what he has coined for, for, for that process. And sometimes when you start to get into those pieces, and I know I've experienced that throughout my career, like if I didn't know why I was doing something, then it felt like I was just being asked to do something more. So I, I started using this slide a couple of years ago and we kept saying, you know, we need to provide more teacher clarity, we need to provide more teacher clarity. And I actually started using the phrase purposeful planning for teacher clarity because teacher clarity means I am a hundred percent clear what I am supposed to be teaching on this standard. And sometimes we can laze over it because we've been teaching it for a while, but didn't realize that two years ago, the words changed slightly. And so now I'm actually teaching to a different level of it than what the intention is. And we just have to be intentional about digging in and unwrapping that. But I like this slide, I'm sorry, I like to be close to people. I like this slide because the purple indicators are right off of the teacher evaluation rubric. And not to use the evaluation rubric in any way but a professional development tool, but domain one of the teacher evaluation rubric is our planning work. It, it defines how we are supposed to evaluate teachers on how well they plan. And so in, in the blue, those are all the steps of planning that Hattie's research on teacher clarity defines and how they fit under each one of those purposeful planning domains to say, no, this isn't something extra, this is the work. And our evaluation tool says, we should be doing these things. It's just helping provide clarity on what that means. So I like to use that slide to show people, it's not more work, it is the work so that we can be prepared. The next piece is, Dr. Hartle mentioned this in our top 10 expectations, that we have, the state has published three documents that quite frankly are the clearest, most explicit pieces of information on our standards that I've ever seen in our career. And many of us have agreed with that. The first one is the instructional frameworks where it doesn't, it doesn't just give that paragraph of what the standard says, it then breaks it into, these are common misconceptions of students, these are common misconceptions of teachers. You know, I've witnessed reading through that document and people notice something about that standard they never noticed before. One example is just this week, it was brought to our attention about a first grade standard that even a video that the IDOE has linked in the past to say, we are going too far with this in first grade, make sure you only, it's double digit addition, and make sure you only do like one double digit with a multiple of 10. But the new framework added a bullet point that said to go on into not just multiple, not just 24 plus 30 or 37 plus 40, but now do 22 plus 37. Now, we have been stopping them there for a few years. And this document gave us clarity. So that's, that's a very key, tiny little minute noticing, but as you can see, if, if prior guidance told us to stop there and we continue to stop there, well, now we're not preparing them for second grade because second grade teenagers are assuming that we picked that up. So I just want to get that tiny little example and just know that there's kind of tables in every single grade level and every single content, K through 12. So these framework documents are so explicit and it's really allowing us to like unwrap with new eyes. The performance level descriptors, Dr. Hartle mentioned these also. We see these as our learning progressions. So you see the words below, approaching, at, or above. Often when you see the word below, you think that indicator means that that child is below grade level in the standard and that's not what this document is saying. That document is saying, here's the full through line of this standard. You should start with the below level because if your kids don't know that, they can't get to the approaching. Once they've mastered the below, you need to make sure they master the approaching. Now you need to make sure they can master the at. And we should get as many kids as possible with some exposure to get into that above the intention of the standard. And this document has been key in us understanding and reflecting that, again, without all of these very clarifying pieces of information, some of our planning has produced learning activities that were just getting to approaching, let alone act. And we've got to make sure that we expose everyone to the above, knowing that not every kid gets there, but we need to at least expose them. So that's been very clarifying. And then we've had item specifications for a long time, but I think those are even more thorough now where they actually give an explicit example of a type of question for each standard. Although they don't give an example of everything the standard whatever covered, but it is a model question for each standard, or a few with varying BOP levels, so that we can model our learning activities on those levels. So all of those pieces have been so instrumental this year in just opening our eyes and getting this clarification.
It's about time.
Yes, and it's nice because we have spent so much time trying to understand the standard. Now we, don't get me wrong, this is a huge undertaking and it's taken all year for us to understand everything that revealing us, but we are hopeful that going forward, we can spend less time talking about the what and get more to the how, now that, now that we truly know what we're supposed to be teaching. Because oftentimes, it takes time to talk about one of these standards. And sometimes we're teaching two or three of them simultaneously instead of just to understand the what, aid of all your planning. And now, now everybody goes back to their room and they figure out the how on their own. We're hoping that this provides more clarity so that as we grow, we can also collaborate more on the how we're going to teach it. Because it's different to have the same resource and then walk into four different classroom teachers who you can tell that they planned together because they're using very similar texts or the same exact handout, but the delivery looks four different ways. And not to say that we want them to be all robotic, you know, we want them to use their personalities, but one or two of the strategies might be far more effective than the other. And not that all four aren't working hard, they just need to collaborate about that most effective way, how to teach the standard. So we're hoping the clarity helps us get to more of the how, which really points us to, and all tied together with data wise, of those models of practice, you know? Those problems of practice can sound more like our students aren't giving explicit because I tell them to do it, I haven't shown them how to do it. Well, now that I've been able to take time and reflect on that, I'm going to try hard for these next four weeks to actually show them how to do it and see if the data gets better, so.
On this secondary level, are the standards unpacked as well for subject specific?
They are through eighth grade and the state is just starting to develop those for your core high school like Alveron One and those. So we're getting there.
Based on the SAT testing.
And they're developing them. So it's not like day one this year, we had them on our hands. We were well at the quarter one before the first one was published and then the, the performance level descriptors. Once we saw that, I mean, we, it's opening our eyes and now it's like every time, I mean, we have our coaches like check the site daily to see if another one has been posted yet because they were chunking them too, like, hey, here's, hey, you're taking I-Learn checkpoint one right now, but here's a list of how they should have been performing. So you're like, okay, thanks for giving that to us while we're taking the test, but it is a higher. It's not a secret, is it? So I remind people of that, like no one is expected to do this yet.
I think, you know, we, we've been administrators for quite a while and it all seemed like there for a number of years, the state was trying to hide. It's a lot of, we're supposed to test them and it wasn't, you know?
And each year, sometimes it would get better and other times it'd be like, what? You know, you messed all that up?
So there was a need to your period.
That's great. That's great, dear.
It's really exciting. After this slide in here, it's the same slide with, this is how, this is, you know, these one point, one, two, three, four, five indicators are how we define in our evaluation system what planning looks like. Those blue indicators are, these are the research-based practices of what each one of those indicators encompass. And then in green, it's like, and this is the IDOE documentation having you read when you're in this phase of the planning. So just to kind of tie it all together, again, the, the blue is not something on top of what, of planning, it is the planning. The green is not one more thing to look at, it is the document you should be looking at when you're doing these steps. So it, it ties it all together. Along with your teacher guides, we, we are also returning to making sure that teachers are really reading those teacher guides. Okay. Or just the other one because none of us can agree. Oh, I'm so sorry. I should have picked a different.
I can't disagree with you. You can't. Can you all read the greens?
All right, it's hard.
I mean, it's, yeah. Okay.
I can change that color.
Well, maybe it's a black one.
I wanted those doctors to get your attention. Any other questions on that piece of purposeful planning? My next topic is just to update you a little bit on the science of reading and our approaches to embedding that research into our practices. I, I like these two graphics the best from everything that we've learned over the last few years about the science of reading and what we were lacking in our balanced literacy approach with these pieces. This comes from Gao and Turner's research from the eighties. And it's, I love that simple view of reading, that it takes word recognition, break that down into that means phonemic awareness and phonics, times language comprehension, breaking that into vocabulary meaning and comprehension. And then by the way, the fluency piece is the bridge between those basic foundations into the meaning. And then that equals reading comprehension. So expanded in that is this scarper's rope. And so you begin to see that the blue indicates that language comprehension and that green rope indicates the word recognition. You see how all of those components of reading tie together to create that reading rope. That's the visual of this research. What we found is that the balanced literacy approach, which many of us were trained on for decades, was leaving out the importance of some of these components. And so with the science of reading research that we dove into really about three years ago heavily, we, we had a state that you've got to name somebody in your district to become the science of reading expert, that's Tammy herself. She was our district literacy coach and now through funding, we've been able to get her to hone in on that K three direction because this also directly connects to all the dyslexia assessment requirements because it all ties in together that those early indicators of characteristics of dyslexia have to do with foundations of reading, you can, you know, it all ties in together. So I like those two visuals best when we are explaining to anyone the shift from, from balanced, or sorry, um, oh my gosh, guided reading and balanced literacy into structured literacy with these graphics. I think they do a really nice job to show all the pieces we're supposed to be including. And I think if you walked into any one of our schools, you might find that it was a different component that we were lacking in. It's hard to even pinpoint, you know, balanced literacy had kind of evolved into being all about just the comprehension piece. And we were, we were not working as hard on those foundations, which was just really widening gaps for some kids. Not to say that the other approach wasn't successful for some kids. We have many kids who successfully read over the years, but this approach is, is helping us diagnose deficits much better.
Fair to say where the rope comes together, that's where they start reading to learn versus learning to read?
Yeah, I mean, yes, when they've mastered the, all the foundations of the language comprehension and the word recognition together, well, really where the rope comes together, they, they are able to do the comprehension. And then further down the rope, yes.
It's more.
The green visualizes really the primary, those foundational pieces and then the blue is where we have to raise to.
Okay. So here's some things that we are really, really proud of. Currently, 122 of our certified teachers have been trained with the IMSE Comprehensive Plus methods of Gordon Hillingham. So you will hear that term, Gordon Hillingham. That is a research-based approach, but there are many vendors who train in it. We have really, while we dabbled with a couple of different vendors when we were first diving in, we really found most faith in the IMSE approach. And Tammy has gone through multiple classes to become an official IMSE trainer. And so right now, we have 122 current teachers. Some of those teachers we've trained along the way through resignations have left us, but 122 current with an additional 10 who do have OG certification just from a different vendor. In addition, right now, we are running a cohort of 22 teachers. There's a limit of how many you can add in a cohort. But right now, 22 of our current teachers are in the middle of a cohort. So very soon, in a few weeks, we'll be able to say we have 144 fully trained. Thirty-six teachers this past summer were able to, so the, the IMSE Comprehensive Plus really comes in on the, the foundational phonics pieces. But IMSE also has a fluency strand of training and morphology strand, they have other strands of training. So this summer, we were able to have 36 of our third through fifth grade work in the morphology piece. Students are ready for morphology at that, about that intermediate. If they have mastered, I mean, they could be exposed to it, but they have many, many deficits in those, in phonemic awareness or phonics and they're, the morphology piece is, I mean, they're not ready for that yet. So the word working piece in third through fifth grade looks more like morphology, which is really, really understanding how word parts work together to construct meaning and manipulating words and word play. If you, if you see examples of those activities, it's actually really fun too. You can have a lot of fun with morphology play. And that's a piece that I remember doing early in my career through the four block And that's a piece that I remember doing early in my career through the block method. And then somewhere along the way, we, again, we, we got so focused on comprehension, it, it like evolved out of our, and so many of these things that we are learning. Some of us are just relearning them, saying, please, I, I made sure I did 15 minutes of this in my block every day, 20, 30 years ago. But we quit doing that along the way somehow. So those are just the little pieces of hallmarks that are coming back from those of us who've been around a little longer.
How are teacher programs helping us or are they not?
Well, new legislation is forcing that this becomes part of their preparation, but of course for, would it be this year's incoming freshman class?
Yes, there's, as, after June 30th, 2025, they will not graduate without having trained in this. But of course, there's going to be a gap of ones. And so they, even the current people that are student teaching, they have encouraged them to get trained and get that endorsement on their license. But we are going to have a gap, so that's why we're trying to really, we want Tammy to get that so she, because she saves us money. Did you hear that? Lots of money. And then we have her in-house and we, we've been very creative in which we've been able to train them because it's, it's five full days of training. So we're, we've done a really good job.
Well, it's encouraging that universities and our teacher preparation programs are being forced to do what they needed to do all along. Just teach our incoming teachers how to teach reading.
IUS has actually reached out to us because as they are trying to make shifts and adjustments in their curriculum, they're, they're actually looking to us for guidance. So on a couple of things, but yeah, the universities are very much happy to apply to this.
So that last bullet there is we've also purchased thankfully through S R funding, the Heffery phonemic awareness curriculum. Because our series, our, our reading series was really lacking in the phonemic awareness piece. And so this is a supplement that we were able to purchase through our federal funding during the S R period. And all of our primary teachers are trained in that and using that safely to fill in those gaps. And actually not even gaps, just like our kindergarten, from the beginning, whereas when we first started using it, we were fully intact. My daughter is a fourth grader in our district and she, so she's that first class that didn't get, didn't get the Heffery in the primary grade. And obviously she's performing fine, she's going past I've learned in I read. But I, when I listen to her read, the educator in me can, it makes sense, I'm like, oh, she missed some things. She's got strings in other ways that have helped her compensate, but I also think how powerful that we're focusing on filling those gaps in. Because it's not just about our kids that are red, it's about whole kids reaching their reading potential. And so I have this theory of like, well, we end up having more past plussers in reading because I've, I have a kiddo that could be a past plusher, but she's right on that fence. And maybe some of those decoding skills are keeping her from being there, you know, so. I have a theory that it should help us increase them all to the right, you know, higher performance, so.
So we're going to talk a little bit about the academies in the high schools and the new diploma requirements. And I'll go ahead and say the diploma requirements, she's a full day training on, but we're going to do a clip of her today. So this is just a current picture of where we are in our high school career academies. One thing to notice, all four, all three buildings have the four career academies, a business, a services, engineering, and public service. But you'll notice in the smaller boxes underneath that our pathways are different based on our status, based on student need. We reevaluate enrollments in those each year, what changes are we making, where do we need to make additions, revisions, those types of things. So it really is centered on what's that market demand and then also what are his interests. Current enrollments there, you will see those are for 10 through 12 graders. So remember, all of our freshmen are in our freshman academy. They take the preparing for college and career scores, which we call freshman seminar. It exposes them to what we offer in those buildings in those four academies. And then additional interest inventories, things like that to really help them hone in by the end of their freshman year to make their choice of which academy they'll go into. We are continuing to work with Ford and our partners there, with Paula and Donna, to explore our work-based learning opportunities, our partnerships, our advisory boards, as well as our steering committee. And I think the work that we've done over the last several years has really put us several steps ahead of most of the state when we get into the new diploma requirements as well. Any questions on the academies?
Do you need student exit information?
We do some surveys within the academies in terms of pre and post and different activities and things that they do. Like when we do the J A trip, things like that, those experimental filters that we do that are career-focused and things like that, we do that feedback for later. Are there others, am I on the right track of what you're talking about about exit?
Well, yes, I, I recently met with a senior, she wanted to interview me and I asked her about the academies. And of course, one student unique to her. But she at first said she didn't think the academies really helped. And I dug a little deeper and then she started saying, oh yeah, that did, oh yeah, that did, oh yeah, that did. And she knew what academy she was in, which is good. But it's like asking a middle school kid, what team are you on? And they say basketball. But I just, do you get information back from what you're doing on how the students feel that their academy helped them prepare?
Yeah, so there's one of the questions in that end of your survey does talk about what was helpful, what wasn't, rated, and those types of things. That's something we can definitely share.
I was, I had concerns about the pathways, but I've heard from all of you, especially Jeff, that would help for the most for this learning thing, don't want to do. Which really he wastes a lot of time and money.
I think it is, it's one or the other. So my guess is the opposite in the terms of he is in the exercise science and is laser focused on, I'm either going to do athletic training or have a new physical therapy.
Yeah.
Because he fell in love with physiology through that pathway.
And I, I think, I think, yeah, either way it helps.
I think you get one or the other almost either. I started in this business, I did the accounting and really don't like it and I shifted to even marketing within there, which is why we have that flexibility.
And even if you don't shift, honestly, just how do you get to college, do you high school, don't matter? So it's just a, it's just a practice.
And I would say the other thing it does is because some of these then become elective. So I could be in the exercise science pathway and have an open elective and I could take an intro to accounting or something else that is also my interest. So they fall under public service and we have a locally developed pathway that allows them to graduate with those arts requirements. So there is actually a fine arts pathway that's built within there. So if you look at those kiddos in the building, we're going to fall under your public service. But there is a completely separate pathway that is unique to us. Most don't end up using, I'll be honest, that we, most kids that are even your top arts kids, they don't end up using that as their pathway. They have some other pathway and those have become their elective, that there is a way to graduate with that pathway.
I just curious on the, on the engineering side, you all look at engineering, maybe you're chemical engineering, but then you have the other trades. Do we have people that helps them, you know, we have counselors that will help them get into your colleges? But, you know, with all the trade schools now and the union side in this area, do we have people helping them and to show them how to get into union or how to get into?
So the academy coaches work with that and then we got those business advisories that come in and try and invite them in as well.
And this, this is beyond prossor.
Yeah, this is what we offer, this is, yeah, this is being, prossor has their own, this is just what we offer in-house. Right, new diploma requirements, again, this is a clip I'm recording. So you will see what we currently do for Core Forty on the left and what the future of the new diploma is on the right. This, the new requirements will start with the 2029 cohort, which is our current eighth graders. So we've already had to make a couple of shifts to make sure that we're getting some of these things in place already. And the state is, again, just like what we talked about with standards, we're kind of building it as we fly the plane. And so we're getting more information on what courses specifically can be used. The biggest overarching thing between the current Core Forty and the future diploma is they offer its flexibility. So you, you can see in English, for example, one of the biggest changes is the addition in English of the one credit of communications-focused course. There are several, the state just came out within the last two weeks of what courses apply for that. So there's several different ones, including speech and some others that kids can plug in in order to meet that requirement. We're obviously, because it is a requirement, looking to see how further we plug that in at, right now it's probably going to be a component of the Bush Ten. Math, you'll see that we went from having six credits required currently to now seven. Current, in the current, you had to take Algebra One, geometry, and Algebra Two. Now you're required to take Algebra One, personal finance, and then four additional. So there is some flexibility in that, one of those being for students who are not on that enrollment track for college, business math now will count for them. So some of those lower level math courses can count as well. Science, we went from six credits to seven credits. Again, currently it's very restricted, you have to have biology, you have to have two credits that are either miniscuit physics or integrated physics. And then two credits of any other Core Forty. Now we're requiring biology, computer science, which is a new addition. We are currently looking, where does that best fit? The state has just recently come out to say they're going to provide curriculum as well as training. So we are in the process of implementing that with our freshmen at that level so that they're all getting it at freshman year. And they have to have two additional.
Sharks, STEM stuff is still projectively delayed for the most part, how many projectively delayed horses do you have?
It depends by building, however, the most at Jeff High. But there are some others that are not projectively the way that the state is, will allow to meet that requirement as well.
Do you know what, who makes, or who puts them out? Is it, is it, is it K and curriculum like private P L T?
I mean, there, there are some different, like some current science courses that they're allowing to meet that, additional P L T. Now, there's a whole list that they just came out with in the last two weeks that has said that, okay, this course will meet this requirement as well.
So they do like I D, P L E, sentimental.
Biomedical needs one, needs one requirement, but it doesn't need the other. So there's a lot of nuances in there with it. It's going to be a lot for counselors in this first couple of years to figure out, making sure that we're getting kids the right boxes checked. Social studies, we went from six down to five. Again, before you had to have U S history, government, econ, and then either world history. Now you have to have U S one semester of government and then you have to have two of other world perspectives. One of those could be econ, but it is not required. So personal finance was the other new addition that we offer currently at an election. But we've had multiple conversations with our high school administrators and counselors, where does that best fit? The easy solution was instead of computer science, let's put it in at freshman year. But let's be honest, that's not what's best for kids because freshmen aren't ready to learn about personal finance. So we are looking at making that a senior course and kids who need econ will still have that opportunity and take econ for the enrollment.
Who would need econ if it's not, if it's no longer required?
Some colleges are going to require it. And so you'll see when we get to the third slide, if you flip it over to the back, you're going to have, those are your seals that you can get. And so your enrollment track would need econ because of that college requirement.
So any athletes and more players?
Currently the N C double A does not accept personal finance as a course.
So it's bill money, so.
Our students are going to be navigated to make sure that they take the things that they're going to need like that econ class.
So our counselors meet with them, they start developing a graduation plan in eighth grade. So our eighth grade counselors are currently meeting with eighth grade students to plan out their freshman and what courses they'll take. And the counselors meet with them every year with a, we tend to start everybody on the enrollment track. So that if you want to be college bound, it's easier to take things away and be flexible from there versus adding things again. So we start adding, we start qualifying this stuff.
And do parents like get this information too, is like?
The high school counselors have done some different informational sessions and things. I'll be honest, we haven't done as much as what we will continue to do because it's all still very new. It was December before we got final clarifications on it and even just courses, what's going to qualify for a math course versus what's going to qualify for. No, I don't believe so. So it's still not really official.
And then really quick too, I know like, okay, so this Core Forty, aren't there other graduation, like diplomas out there?
So Core Forty is the base.
Population, is that staying the same?
So the Core Forty is your base high school diploma, there's still the alternative diploma for students who are on special education track as well. If you're talking about like an honors diploma and a technical honors diploma, that's where those seals are going to come into play. And I'll explain how, where those correlate here in a second.
But with those seals, I mean, they're going to tag funding, state funding.
So is the econ a seal, so I'm looking at, you're going to share.
There'll be, you know, financial impacts of those students you put through each seal. So that's something more counselors also have to be.
We assume based on current trend, I don't know if we're required by colleges, it's still not a joint, it isn't still a half year. But it falls under those two credits of world perspective.
Can I elaborate on the alternative diploma as well? We've been made aware that that, the requirements, as far as the credits, so the 42 credits will be applicable through those units that students receive. But it is absolutely not going away and will still exist before.
Health P E currently goes from three credits down to two. We currently provide that health credit at eighth grade in middle school, so that frees up an elective in high school.
Is this all grown up?
Directed elective.
Yeah.
Directed and personalized in the Core Forty were two separate categories, now they're combined. So instead of needing 11, you need 12. And that is where that flexibility comes in and the personalization onto your pathway and those courses to really fine tune it to what you're trying to accomplish out of that. And then college and career wasn't required before Forty, even though we were teaching it. And now one semester is required, prep for college and career.
Re-coming freshmen.
Yes. So we're going from 40 credits to 42, but with the seventh period day, students get at least 56 credit opportunities. Really more than that because we offer health at the eighth grade. So those were your base requirements for diploma. If you want to do an academic honors type diploma, there are three different categories of enrollment, enlistment, and employment. And then each one of those has separate criteria to get an honors seal or an honors plus. So if you think about what we currently know and what we're used to with an academic honors diploma. That is basically your enrollment honors seal. With the exception that kids currently have to have three years of one foreign language or two years of two different foreign languages. Foreign language requirement is no longer required. Or I'm sorry, you have to have two years of foreign language, not three in that one. And then you have to have, there's no fine arts requirement like there currently is for the academic honors. So couple of little changes there. The enrollment honors plus seal would be the equivalent to the Indiana College Core that we currently offer along with 75 hours of work-based learning. along with 75 hours of work-based learning. The employment honors seal is comparable to our current technical honors seal.
The what, I'm sorry?
The employment honors is comparable to the technical honors that kids currently have. And the one difference there is now they have to have 150 hours of work-based learning.
How many did they currently have that?
Work-based learning currently is one of those second and third bucket, it's bucket two. So I need my Core 40 requirement, and then I have to meet one of those other buckets.
Poor counselors, I don't know how they keep up with this. I couldn't do it.
I think a freshman with the most credits ever, I still have a freshman in there.
No, I still have a high school.
So they are, they're trying to fine-tune exactly what that looks like. But our counselors do a fantastic job of tracking. The other piece of it is, without getting too far into the weeds, just like we have right now, that if I don't graduate with a pathway, I can get my bucket two, which is project-based learning, work-based learning, service learning, those types of things. And I can get my bucket three, which is like an SAT, sets score on SAT, ACT, ASV, those types of things. So those factors are still in play here.
Yeah.
For that additional flexibility.
Basically, if you get a 1250 on the SAT, you don't have to do anything else.
Or a?
You still have to meet the base requirements.
Yeah, I mean, you still have to get a Core 40, but then if you get a 1250. But you can't get a seal plus without giving your life away.
Yes.
But the enlistment seal, there, you have to give it.
So the enlistment seal came into play, I think, because we had so many kids in the state who were using it as, I have, as meeting that bucket three requirement. And then the actual enlistment ran from what should be to what was actually enlisted in the military rating was on a decline. From everything I read, that was kind of the reasoning behind that enlistment piece. I was trying to make sure kids who were doing that really were looking to enlist and eligible to enlist.
Cool.
A lot of you.
Now, that's why I'm going to give provided a handout because it's a lot. So feel free to, if you have other questions that come up, I'm more than happy to help. But me to do eight hours on that, still have questions.
Does anyone have a breakfast session on the graduation?
Yeah, I'm going.
Schools?
Yes.
All right, does anyone need a seventh any stretch? Do you need to move?
No.
Half an hour through.
All right.
But thank you.
Yes, I didn't know you were seeing taking into consideration. I am going to update you on the state of a couple of our programs, the special education program, the preschool program, and the ELL program. And then I'm going to end with an exciting opportunity that we have at Parkwood Elementary for next year. So we'll start with our special education department. Currently, we are serving 20.6% of our students, our students who have a disability, who we are serving with special education services. That is quite an increase. We are slightly above the state average, not significantly above, but slightly above. We have probably increased at least 3% in the past five years. That's a, that's a large number of students. So obviously with that, Keith, do you have questions?
No, I was actually just wondering, like, does it include, like, all of the, like, every student?
That is every student with an I E P in our district from preschool to 12th grade with one of the 13 eligibility areas in Indiana. So also including our speech and language only students. For next year, we are looking at a restructure. The idea behind that restructure is to better support our students within our buildings. So currently, we have five special education supervisors, six if you count our preschool supervisor, but five would go out and who serve our buildings. Next year, they will be housed in one of our middle school buildings, with the exception of one person who will kind of have a more specialized job. But again, the whole intent is to make sure that our programs are being more supported. We feel that if they are in buildings, there is a better chance that they are going to be readily available to help students and help programs. The other piece of that is we've aligned them with feeder sites. So from elementary to middle school. So for example, the person who serves River Valley Elementary, or River Valley Middle School, will also serve the elementary that feed into that middle school with the hope that they can create those good relationships with parents, maybe from preschool all the way up through their middle school, and then once they get into high school as well. Our most idea, our most recent I E P compliance report indicated that we were functioning at an 87.2%, which is great for a district our size. That is based off of our student results, our student growth, our overall outcomes, our special ed environments, our timeliness as far as getting our grants submitted on time, our evaluations submitted on time. So for a district our size, we are at that, that upper 80%. In looking at our redistricting that's happening next year with the new boundary lines, that's going to impact, obviously, our special ed programs as well. Saying more programs will be available in students' home schools, which is a great thing. It's really difficult sometimes when, you know, you're sitting in a conference with a parent and you're having conversations about what, what that student might need. But the end of that is, oh, and by the way, we don't have that at their home school. We have to go somewhere else. So the reboundaries will, will help with that piece in helping keep our students in their home schools more often, especially at that elementary level. Yes.
Are we going to have services at every elementary school? Or will it be like one that's, you know, just piled on all the cups? Could we might have to finalize on what?
All of our elementary schools will have programming, with the exception of New Washington. The population is so small there that we do bless those students to our Charles Town Elementary programs right now. Next year, we have a big change coming to us as far as our I E P system. So currently, we use what's called the Indiana I E P system. That is mandated by the state. So every school corporation in the state is mandated to use that. They are changing that on us next year. It's, I'm sure a money grab because the vendor who currently calls it lost their contract, so Power School has won that contract. So I'm mildly excited because we are a Power School district. And so I'm hoping that our current student information system information rolls nicely into the new I E P system. So I'm being cautiously optimistic. We know that with any new major rollover like that, the fear is that all of our student records are going to roll. We, we are crossing our fingers in the fact that that happens. But we also, every student record, paper copy is housed in our lower level here in the building. So if that should happen, we do have backups. Our PD focus for this year, with the help of Beth Kimmel, who has come on as one of our special ed supervisors, has been that explicit instruction piece and that specially-designed instruction. So she has been doing a great job with going in and helping teams of teachers, either during period zero or through some after-school sessions where we're paying teacher stipends for staying after their contract time to get a better understanding of exactly what that looks like. When we talk about explicit instruction, she's modeling for those teachers. She's using a lot of Anita Archer's work to show that, you know, when we say, yeah, we do explicit instruction, well, do you really, are you really doing that guided practice? What does it look like when you're sitting with a small group of students? So she has also created a fabulous slide that, that for the buildings that she is not working in, all of our other supervisors are presenting that to their teams. So all of our teachers, regardless of their level of experience, are getting that same instruction, just as that, that good instructional piece that aligns very nicely with our teacher therapy process as well. Any questions before we move on to preschool?
I'm trying to do.
Okay.
I know that we, we provide services to parochial and private schools. Would you rather just parochial?
Both. So we currently serve Sacred Heart and Providence because they are in our factors.
Okay. So what does that mean as far as programming for kids that want to go to those schools?
So through our federal grant dollars, we have funds that are called proportionate share dollars. So it's automatically formulated, however many students they claim, that is the amount of dollars they get. So with those dollars, they can choose how they support their students. We currently have two teachers that are assigned to those buildings. So they are greater Clark employees, but they serve students within both of those locations. So in a private school, students do not have I E Ps. They have what are called service plans, which are very, very similar to I E Ps as far as the layout and the services that are outlined. They have goals, they have, you know, required and new progress monitoring. So those teachers who are assigned are providing that direct instruction to those students who attend either Sacred Heart or Providence.
Do they provide all of the disabilities?
Yes.
Support from, does he have support?
I mean, I, no one else has asked that. A parent called me trying to enroll their student at one of those schools. And she said, the teacher that was talking to them said they did not have to provide these specific services for that child. So she was going to enroll them and separate. And I, I didn't think that's right.
They, they may have their own standards, but legally, they have provided a teacher who can provide those services, who is legally licensed to provide those services.
Okay. I didn't want to get down in weeds with this lady, but I told her I would check in with somebody else.
Yes, and they, the federal dollars.
No, I got a different one.
The federal dollars monitor those proportionate share very closely. So we cannot go under by one penny. We have to make sure that we spend every penny of that where, where it needs to go to that, to the, to the private.
Okay, I'll call you now, I'll call you down line. It's not a big deal.
And title one is the same. And title two?
Yeah.
And title four?
All right, preschool. So we are currently serving 379 preschool-age students. So I think through some, I'm sure you've heard Mark Hoffner share that he wants to serve 400 preschool students now and in the future, and even more. We are very, very close to that number. So that includes students who are classified as what we call bring-in students. Bring-in students are identified as having some type of disability, but whose parents choose, they don't want them in preschool just yet. So they bring them in for services. A lot of times that's for speech therapy. So they, that's, that's usually a parent choice. But that includes our bring-in students also. Any way we can get them, whether it's bring-in or in-person, we take it because we know the only time they can spend in our program is going to be better once they transition to a different environment. We recently, this is the first year that the I D O E has started doing in-person monitoring visits. So we were notified back in October that, hey, by the way, in two weeks, we're going to be at one of your buildings. You get to pick, but we're going to be there. So we picked Thomas Jefferson Elementary. There were two I D O members that came and they observed for a solid two hours. That was longer than honestly I thought they would be there. But the whole time, I'm like, okay, guys, have we seen enough? But we did get exemplary notes back from that. And then after that, we were notified, or we were contacted by one of the raiders who asked if she could send some other district contacts our way to answer any questions they might have. So we took that as a pretty big compliment.
Yes.
And we got all nice big green check marks in all of our areas. They were predominantly looking at L R E to make sure that we were not serving students just with special education peers. We don't do that. We mix all of our peers. So we have typical peers, identified students. It's a, it's a very inclusive environment. So we were pretty proud of that. Currently, our funding sources include those On My Way Pre-K funds as well as tuition, and by tuition, those are our paying parents who are maybe not eligible for those On My Way Pre-K dollars. We have 112 current On My Way Pre-K funded students. Those amounts fluctuate on the amount that each of those students are earning. And it's based off of income from information that their parents submit. And then we have 76 tuition-paying students. And I will say that we, we have a pretty good rate of collecting those tuition dollars for parents. So we, we give them flexibility in how they pay that as far as the amount. Some of them like to pay it all upfront, some of them we put on like a payment plan. But we run that all through a business office and we have, we have pretty good luck with getting what they owe and they do owe us.
What is that about?
For the tuition, it's $150 a week.
That's full day?
For full-day programming with transportation provided. So that is a steal. If you price any daycare lately, it is, it is a steal when it's compared to really other preschool programs and daycare programs. Our current staffing, I've listed our number of certified teachers, our C D As, which are our child development associates. I was just speaking with our preschool supervisor today and she, she told me, she said, our C D As are knocking it out of the park. You would never know that these people are not licensed teachers. They have training to, to earn their certificate, to become a C D A. But they are doing almost the identical duties as a teacher. They're running a full classroom every single day and they're doing a really fabulous job. So we have eight current C D As. And then we have 27 paraprofessionals. So our assistants that are in the classroom. I know that number sounds high, but when you're working with three and four-year-olds, the more hands, the better. Sometimes it's, it's a two-to-one situation. So we, we keep extra hands on, on all the time. Right now, our focus is on those early childhood standards and those foundational reading skills that align very nicely with the science of reading. So we're giving them those early foundational skills at preschool level so that when they get to kindergarten and they start, you know, getting those Orkin-Gillingham sessions and they're getting, you know, all of their, their early skills, they're, they're already ahead of the game. Our kindergarten teachers have also noted that they are seeing a difference in those students who are in our preschool programs, who are coming to their classrooms. I think it's a pretty distinct difference as far as just knowing how to, how to be in school, how to manage your body and manage yourself during the school day. So we're pretty proud of that as well. One thing that we did add this year with preschool, we are not required to do the exact same amount of instructional days as our K through 12 students. So with our preschool schedule that we published pretty early on, we did incorporate four professional development days. And so those happened at the end of every quarter, before we went to fall break, Christmas break. It will happen again in spring. And then we had one early on in July. But that has been critical. It's a full day that we're providing our people. And all of them have braved that. It's been so beneficial to helping them kind of increase, you know, their knowledge of preschool programming. The other piece is that those staff members that are listed there, those people have different requirements because of our paths to quality ratings that we're required to get through the state. And so our preschool staff have to be fingerprinted. They have to go through direct tests, which are no longer, you know, required for all employees. It's a pretty strenuous list of tasks that we have to give them. So we say, hey, you get to work in preschool. By the way, you have to get all of these things done. So CPR was required. And on our first P D day last week, we did a lot of that work. I went through all of the requirements last year because one, I wanted to know, like, okay, how tedious is this for staff to get it done? It is, it's a lot of work, I'm telling you. T V test is another one that they have to get. So staying on top of all of those appointments. I've also never been formally fingerprinted until recently. So that was, that was an experience. Yes. All right. Oh, do we have any questions before we move on? All right, ELL. So we're currently serving 1,370 ELL students, just like our special education population. This is a highly, it's growing very rapidly, especially within our area. So I believe three years ago, we were right at 10,000. I think the number was 10,070 when I last looked. So that's, that's an increase of about 100 students a year. I like to think it's because we do a really fabulous job and the word is out there. But I also think that in our area, there are a lot of employment opportunities for families. And so obviously, they, they are bringing their children to us. In 20, or at the start of last year, we added an ELL program to Wilson Elementary. And at the start of this year, we added an ELL program to. and at the start of this year, we added an ELL program to Utica Elementary. So that gave us the chance to, once again, keep students in their home schools, which has made, I feel like, a lot of our families very happy because, again, that conversation of there is a language barrier, but your child might have to go to another location. So it's a good feeling when we can say, yes, we can be all of your needs right there in your home school. With our redistricting next year, we have projected added programs at Franklin Square, at Riverside, and at the new Pike Elementary. So we're pretty proud of those additions because, again, we will no longer have to, you know, have that conversation of pushing kids out of their home school. We brought on a new ELL coordinator for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Her name is Ashley Molina. She has done a fabulous job of providing PD to our teens, so that has been a nice addition for our teachers and our students. And then the last bullet point here, we had, I don't know the exact number, but we were added to a pretty distinguished list across the state of students who are receiving the certificate of multilingual proficiency. So Jeff High had students who participated in that assessment, and what that is, is that is a nice special seal that goes, goes on their diploma. They get some nice little cords that they wear at graduation, and that's basically recognizing that they are proficient in more than one language. It's a, it's a great piece, helpful to get them into college. But we, we had one teacher who was very, who was very passionate about it, who kind of spearheaded it, and she, we were able to get funding through the Greater Clark Foundation. Ms. Emily Oliver Jones helped us with securing funds for that assessment that has to be purchased for our students to take, and we were able to get quite a few students that seal. So that was a, that was a big accomplishment, and that, our first round was the grant in class of twenty twenty-four. Questions on ELL? All right, you ready? This might be our last piece here, right? Okay. Dr. Hart, this is like, yes, very up. Next year at Parkwood Elementary, we are moving to a dual-language immersion program for kindergarten. So this is something that we, I think we know has been needed in the Parkwood area for quite some time. So with some of our Clark School tip dollars, we were able to start doing our planning last year, as well as this year. So we were also awarded a smaller grant through the Department of Education that basically helps districts or schools get this program off of the ground. So we have contracted with an agency called TajU. So we have a consultant who works with us. She's worked with the team at Parkwood. Karen Wesley and I have been involved in that, as well as our ELL coordinator, in just talking through, like, what is it going to take to get this program off the ground? So again, our inception year is this coming year, twenty-five, twenty-six. We're looking at doing a two-way program with our targeted language of Spanish. So Parkwood is unique in that they have a very high ELL population, but different from North Haven because the majority of those students who speak a different language speak Spanish. North Haven is different. They have a whole variety of language, but Parkwood is very concentrated in the Spanish language. So obviously, it makes most sense that we are going to target that as our secondary language. We're looking at an eighty-twenty model, which means that eighty percent of a student's instructional day in these two programs, the two classrooms, will be taught in Spanish and twenty percent will be taught in English. I know that as adults, that's like, oh my gosh, can we do that? I will tell you, I was not a believer until I saw it happening. Through our grant, we've been able to do site visits at three different Indiana schools, and then we also sent a team out of state back in the summer and then last fall to go and watch, you know, some different places. The most recent visit we went on was in the Columbus area. It was at a school that was failing academically when this program was put into place, and it was amazing to see this happening and to see your Spanish speakers communicating like through small group activities with your English speakers. I was a skeptic, I'm not going to lie. And then when I left our first visit, I think I told Karen Wesley, okay, I think we can do this.
Do you remember, what schools in Indiana do you recall? Do you remember which ones you went to?
Clithy Creek was the one we most recently visited. There was Thompson Crossing, which I believe was in Lawrence Township, and then Skiles Test, which was, I don't remember the district. Maybe Lawrence also?
It's, it's, I think that was Lawrence.
Okay.
It's on the upper east side of Indianapolis.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, Lawrence is down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, no, maybe, you know, just curious.
All three, very impressive. And they were all at different points in where they were in programming. So one was in year two, the other was in year five, so just seeing the progression over time was, was impressive. So our staffing for that, which are positions for teachers and our classified specialists are already posted, so if you know any great bilingual people, you can send them our way. I know that we had lots of conversations with Dr. Shimerman and Kylan Walker, the admin intern at Parkwood. They believe that they have two pretty good candidates for next year who are already current members of the Parkwood staff. So we're working on making sure that that is secured because obviously, that is a big piece in making sure that the program is successful. The curriculum for math, our current revealed curriculum has a component that already is Spanish, so it makes sense. It's what we're already using, we're just going to use the Spanish component. And then for that reading and ELA piece, we've not a hundred percent made it final, but we will likely use Amplify. They have a component for Spanish called Caminos. And then we will accompany that with the Spanish version of Hegarty, which is what our students, again, are already participating in, in English. There's a Spanish component that we would use for that as well. And then that last piece there, assessment, so students who are in a dual-language program, they are still required to participate in state assessments. Those are done in English. So when a student takes IRE, IRE is not available in Spanish. So we, we know that those things are coming. We also anticipate that there's probably going to be some hiccups with that, but we are, I feel like we are committed to trudge forward. A lot of research says that there is a little dip in academics, but then they really start to kind of separate from the peers who are not in dual immersion programming. There is also, not for kindergarten, but there is an assessment of proficiency that we will have to look into in the future. They recommend that you don't give it at kindergarten because you've not really given them enough time to, to show how proficient they are. But there are, there, it will be another assessment component that we have to annually assess our students to make sure that they are making growth in both languages. So our whole goal is to make sure that not only are we helping students become bilingual, but also making them bi-literate. So learning, knowing how to speak Spanish is one thing, but being bi-literate and knowing how to read and write Spanish is far different. We think that it's going to make our students far more marketable. You know, if we have bilingual candidates right now, I mean, it's, those people are up here as far as what they can offer. They just have a whole skill set that is highly desired by a lot, a lot of people. So that is, that is where we are with our dual-language immersion. I know that Tammy attended one of our advisory sessions. We do have some more parent sessions that will be happening in the spring. I would invite any of you to attend if you would like to, to join those. But that is, that is where we are with our dual-language planning.
I am so excited this is happening. Like, I have been waiting for this app since Dr. Hart was on.
He is monitoring our staff.
Yeah.
The chief of our staff.
Keeping the right staff. We definitely feel like we're going to have to offer all of that support because our goal, we're starting with kindergarten, and then we're going to slowly add each year as those students progress.
So that will be a cohort that moves through, they'll stay together?
Yes.
Okay. And just an interesting question, when the kids are just on playground or whatever, recess, or talking to each other, how do they do that? I mean, are they like going back and forth between their languages?
They do, they do a lot of switching. Yeah, they do a lot of switching, and they're doing it now even without dual-language immersion because that's how, the only way they're going to be able to communicate with their friends. One interesting thing that we saw at our last visit was they had, forget the color, we'll just use green and red, but during green time, that was when you could only speak Spanish in the classroom. So the teacher got a little light, that she would flip that switch, and when it was green, that was Spanish time. When she flipped it to, to red, that was your English time. So just those indicators of, okay, we're going to do our best to try to communicate and, and have conversations in Spanish right now and in that time also for, for English. So it was, it was very interesting.
I think this pool that all from, from bilingual certified teachers, I'm betting it's going to be hard.
Remember when they said we was going to try to get at least fifty kids to commit to this program?
The goal is fifty students to commit, so twenty-five in each class. So right now, they're working through that application. It will be a little different than our standard registration process because we also want to make sure that our families are committed because it's not going to be super easy. It's not, there's going to be some bumps, so we need to.
I'm going to be able to help them there.
So that's, I'm so sorry if I dabbled too long. Any more questions?
No.
No, thank you very much, it's great. All of you. Any, any final questions for us before we close out the work session?
Eric's on it.
Thank you all very much. The work session is now adjourned.
Bye.